There you go. Good job.
Good evening, everyone. If you please take your seats. Welcome to the regular commission meeting this April the eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Commissioner Marker.
Here.
Vice Mayor Long.
Here.
Commissioner Cassell.
Here.
Deputy Vice Mayor Burns.
Here.
Mayor Carney.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. If you could all please rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyway, you have in front of you your agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? I have one item. I want to move six and one, which is the National Public Safety Telecommunication Week proclamation, and move that to four F underneath, uh, underneath all the presentations. So.
Mayor.
Yes?
I have two.
Okay.
Um, if we can take six F from the consent agenda and move it to the regular agenda as seven B one.
Seven who?
Seven B as in boy one.
Okay.
And if we can move six G to the regular agenda and make that seven B two.
Okay.
Um, these are the, um, the matters that you'll be.
Oh, then I'm in conflict on those. You just need to remind me when to leave.
Yes, sir.
So, Mayor, in reference to item six C, I don't know that we need to pull it. It's the one regarding our resolution to adopt legislation that requires hands-free phone use while driving. Um, we do have a former state representative and chairman of Dory Saves Live, Erv Slossberg here. I'd like for him to have a minute to just say a few words and explain the significance of that legislation. But we don't necessarily need to pull it and read the whole resolution. So I'm just thinking maybe sometime at the beginning of the meeting, we could give him a minute to, to talk about it. Then we don't have to do the whole resolution later on. It's just on the consent agenda right now.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't mind moving and just giving him an opportunity to speak.
Yeah.
So we could make that what?
Do you want to make it four G?
Uh, why don't we make it four G? Cause it's in that realm. You won't be long. Will you, uh, Senator? Okay. I've got four F as the six and one. Now we've got four G is whatever six C was. And are there any others?
I was thinking something about seven C. I don't know if we want to have this whole discussion. Um, but now as I'm reading it, I, I feel like maybe we have to. I was just thinking we could.
Seven C?
Which is the, uh, city special events policy.
Okay.
Super quick. I think, you know, there's some concerns. I, have you spoken to Mr. Forrest at all? When you, when some of these events are coming in front of us, do you contact our lobbyists, discuss them with him?
We have general discussions in that regard, but.
What did he say about this specifically?
Nothing terribly specific.
Okay.
Other than general observations, somewhat editorial.
I spoke to him and he was pretty specific. And so what I'm thinking is, look, we, um, are a very inclusive city. We want to, uh, you know, accommodate everybody. We care about everybody. But we also are a form of representative government and we have to represent everybody. I think we, we have two things happening that day. We have a concert and we have.
Why are we doing this now instead of during the agenda item?
Cause I was just gonna pull it and say, we should direct Mr. Moore to move forth with the festival. I mean, and, and ask for private donors to try and assist us and have the concert. It amounts to fifteen thousand dollars. And I think what I would like you to do, if you could, for the next meeting, and then we can talk about it. So I don't want to pull it. I don't want to pull the event. What I would like you to do is gather some information before the next meeting to see if we can get donors to assist with the festival. You talk to Matt Forrest and see what he thinks. Because the concern is, in my discussion with him, there could be financial ramifications to our city. And I'd like to avoid that at all costs. So the city pays for the concert as a separate event. And the festival, we try and get private donors through different organizations. We continue to, um.
So you're saying for the next year, we would, we would not sponsor it? Is that what you're suggesting?
No, I'm not talking about the next year. I'm trying to figure out this year.
But we're trying, but we're not gonna sponsor it this year, is what you're trying?
I didn't say that. I'm asking Mr. Moore to go back and talk to our representative, figure out what other cities are doing, and come back to us with information. Because what I'm hearing is, this could, we could be penalized for this.
I haven't heard that. Lake, Lake Worth just did theirs and they haven't got penalized.
I don't wanna, I spoke to our lobbyist today and he said he has concerns.
I've spoken to a lot of folks.
I talked to him. I called him at eight o'clock this morning and we talked at one o'clock.
Did he recommend that we pull it?
He said, I, he said, don't do it.
Did he?
Yes, one hundred percent. And that's why I'm concerned.
I find it hard to believe because he didn't, he didn't call any of us to tell us that.
Please don't say that that's hard to believe. I called.
It is hard to believe.
Well, I'm telling you, that's the truth. So that's why I want Mr. Moore to go call him. And I would like to just have Mr. Moore come back at our next meeting and give us information. So we're working on a, on a full, uh, on a, uh, with solid information.
Mr. Moore's gonna ask private donors if they want to fund the event that we are still gonna fund this year or next year?
I would like him to reach out to our lobbyist to ask him what his thoughts are. Because if we are going out for funding from the state and we don't get it because of an event.
The event's after session ends.
It, it.
The event's after session ends.
Advertising it.
It's already been advertised and budgeted.
I know, and I'm concerned.
That's the mayor.
Point of order.
Are you asking to postpone it? Are you asking?
Correct. I want to postpone it and give direction to Mr. Moore.
Is that what you're asking for?
Postpone the item?
Correct.
Okay. So hasn't this already been budgeted for, for this year?
Doesn't matter.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I offer a recommendation?
Please do.
I'm more than happy to consider those points of view in that regard. However, for the benefit of all, I would like to address those specifics when we come to seven C. We have opportunity at that time to offer cogent direction and get to that place.
Discuss it at all.
Yep.
No, I'd like to have a real discussion about it, not this attempt to like railroad it.
It's not an attempt to railroad it. I totally support it. I just have to, we have to consider all of our residents.
Well, why wasn't the rest of the commission informed about this don't do it from the lobby?
I called him this morning and then I talked to him in the afternoon because he was in a meeting and he texted me back. I will call you back. I made that call on my own.
It'd be nice to have some kind of written email or correspondence or something that we could actually see instead of taking your word for it.
Mr., well, I know. Please, that's really insulting. As not Robert's rules, he's implying I'm lying. Decorum.
I said it'd be nice, I said it'd be nice to have some sort of confirmation.
Decorum.
Mr. Mayor, please. Can I, if I can, I, I understand what you're saying, which is to, to pull it so that we can collect more, more information. I didn't communicate directly with the lobbyist. I'd like to hear that.
Yeah, thank you.
I'd like to have that conversation. That, that would make me more equipped to be able to answer this question.
Right.
Correct.
I, so I don't, I don't have a fundamental problem with that.
I would like to figure out a way to proceed with it. I just wonder if we need to do it slightly differently.
Well, I gotta be honest, I'm not comfortable with choosing which events we do based on what's the most politically expedient. Cause that could put a lot of our events in jeopardy going forward. So I, I don't even, I'm actually very disappointed that we're even having this conversation. It feels very pointed that we're singling out our Pride Festival.
We're not singling out our Pride Festival.
Weeks before it's already been scheduled.
We're not singling it out.
When it occurs after session, they just have one in Lake Worth. There were zero repercussions. There are no bills going through right now that directly impact this issue.
Listen.
So I don't, I don't really get where this is coming from.
I don't know what repercussions there are, nor do you, which is why I reached out directly to the lobbyist.
Lake Worth just had theirs and there were no repercussions. I've checked.
Have they asked for funding?
Yeah, I spoke with the director of, and the director of the Human Rights Council.
Let me, let me get, let, let, let's cheer, work.
Let's just gather information. That's all I'm asking.
If you don't want to talk about it.
I do, I want it, what I want to do is direct Mr. Moore to get.
Well, when you, you, you yourself said you'd like to see an email. So let's, can we push it to the next meeting and then have the discussion? See what emails we develop? See whether or not it's worth having the discussion? Yes?
I, I would like, I think we need to have more information. I'm not asking you to cancel it. I'm asking you to put it off till the next meeting, till we can figure it out.
There's no pretext to even have this on this agenda. So if we're gonna talk about, let's have it under an item.
We got a point of order. Yes?
I ju, I think that because there's so much back and forth, maybe we leave it on the agenda. Mr. Moore has additional information.
I do. I would like to.
Presented to the commission.
Cogently address it.
We can address it today if you, if you want to hear it.
And quite frankly, thank you.
More broadly about the policy.
Thank you very much, Madam City Attorney, because my interest is to have a focus regarding special events policy, not singling out one particular event. Because as we just experienced during the workshop session at three o'clock, we're focused on budget, particularly send related concerns in that regard. So I would like to take a moment at the time we reach agenda item seven C so that we can have a cogent discussion briefly. Yet at the same time, I'm very supportive of the ideas and suggestions being offered to strike a balance. But I think it would be productive to do so at that time. So if I can have that opportunity, I will offer a professional focus so that we can get to the best place possible.
Thank you.
So thank you, ladies and gentlemen. If we can proceed with the rest of the agenda.
Any other changes on the agenda? Or attempted changes?
No.
Then I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Okay. All right. Presentations. Boots on the ground video contest. This is Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
I don't even want to know what it is.
Okay, very well. So the city of Delray Beach, and I think I recall seeing, uh, Brilton, where are you?
She's in.
She's some, there you are. She got dressed for the occasion. Look at this. Well done. So in any event, ladies and gentlemen, the let's move initiative. So we've had opportunity to celebrate and acknowledge this. Commissioner Burns, celeb of y'all, honored this particular occasion. And we thought we briefly showcased a video production to highlight for the city of Delray Beach, our involvement and how serious we take this particular opportunity. So with that, City Attorney Lynn Jellin, you're laughing with me because you and I talked about this idea. So on that note, this is a brief video presentation we'd like to share as a great way to.
You're in this as well?
Have a positive kickoff to this evening's city's commission meeting. Commissioner Burns, that's up to you as to whether or not you wish to dance. However, let the video run. Fair enough. Rafael Rodriguez from the Department of Information Technology. So ladies and gentlemen, if you would indulge us, please.
That's the record show. That was Commissioner Burns. Your life will never be the same.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Just for the record, I was invited to a toga party over the weekend. I couldn't go because I was out with my brothers. But that's exactly why I wouldn't go. Because someone would have a camera and it would be up there on the film thing. You're very brave. Congratulations.
And Vice Mayor Burns, Deputy Vice Mayor Burns, I should say, we appreciate you for being a great sport. And participating.
And it's for a good cause.
All for the cause, all for the cause.
I'll try my best to be a good sport, but it is not concerning dancing.
Well, it was several days of practice and constant encouragement by Ms. Bruton. And I want to thank her for her dedication to the let's move, uh, movement in Delray Beach. And thanks to everybody who logged your minutes. Hopefully we'll bring home the first place trophy this year instead of the second place trophy. With that, we better bring home the first place trophy.
Yes.
Very good. All right. Next is a special recognition in memory of, of Irving Adams, Jr. Sam Metot, you're here to read wherever you are. Sam?
Sure.
I saw you.
Sam Metot is around. So until he arrives, I'll go ahead and kick this off. We recently had an opportunity to discuss this. Bear with me.
The dancing threw him off. I understand. I think he was in the back room practicing.
He's tagging his points.
And before Mr. Metot proceeds with his presentation, Mr. Adams would have soon reached his thirty-year mark. He was slightly off in that regard due to his untimely passing. So it's important to recognize that. But I believe you'll touch on that as part of your commentary.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Sam Metot, Director of Parks and Recreation. Thank you for this opportunity to recognize special member of our Parks and Recreation team. I'd like to just read this proclamation on, on his behalf. On behalf of the city of Delray Beach City Commission, we pay tribute to Irving Adams, Jr. For his thirty years of incredible service to the city of Delray Beach as a recreation supervisor at the community center. Irving was more than just a colleague. He was family to all of us. He was caring, respectful, dependable, and thoughtful, always bringing warmth and kindness to everyone he met. If there's one word that describes Irving best, it's caring. He greeted everyone with a smile, took the time to say hello, and could hold the best conversations on just about any topic. His presence made our community stronger and his absence will be deeply felt. While we mourn his loss, we also celebrate his lasting impact he made on so many lives. Our thoughts are with his family, friends, and all who had the privilege of knowing him. Rest in peace, Irving. You will never be forgotten. We are honored to recognize the memory of Irving Adams, Jr. Who will be deeply missed by everyone in the city of Delray Beach, Florida's community. Sincerely, Thomas F. Carney, the mayor, and the rest of us at the city of Delray Beach and specifically Parks and Recreation. We thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have the plaque? You're gonna present it to the family?
You will.
You will do that?
Yes.
Perfect. I appreciate it. Thank you very much, Sam. And next is a certificate of recognition presented to Perry Don Francisco, a man who I've known for a lot of years, even before I moved here. And it gives me great pleasure to do this. He's been such a credit to this community in so many different areas. And this is only gonna capture a small part of it, but let me read this certificate of recognition. In honor of your unwavering dedication and extraordinary leadership as president and co-founder of Delray Citizens for Delray Police, since its inception in nineteen eighty-eight, through your vision and commitment, the organization has provided approximately three million dollars in equipment and support to enhance police operation and strengthen the bond between law enforcement and the Delray Beach community. Your impact includes the establishment of the annual Delray Citizens for Delray Police scholarships, ensuring educational opportunities for the children of sworn officers for thirty-six consecutive years. You have fostered community engagement through events such as the Tri-City Labor Day Police Challenges, the Kids and Cops Holiday Toy Drive, and the Delray Beach Police Ice Cream Truck Initiative, all of which have created meaningful connections between law enforcement and the community they serve. Your advocacy for youth programs, including the Delray Beach Police Explorers, Kids and Cops, Atlantic High School Criminal Justice Program, and the Target Heroes and Helpers Initiative, has empowered future generations while enforcing the values of mentorship and service. Additionally, the Delray Citizens for Delray Police Annual Awards Banquet, and Christine Browswell Scholarship for aspiring officers stand as lasting testaments to your commitment to the men and women in uniform. On behalf of the city, Delray Beach Commission, we commend you for your outstanding service, leadership, and dedication to making Delray Beach a safer and stronger community. You want to say a brief something? He's gonna breathe. You're gonna breathe? Yes, you want to breathe? You sure you don't want to be there? Andre, you need code. Don't use flashes, please, otherwise you'll be blinded.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission and everybody in the audience. Um, so I'm the heir apparent to taking over this incredible organization. I've had the privilege of being involved with Perry for over twenty years. I don't know if anybody's been involved with nonprofits in their life. Uh, here's what I can tell you. The man has never pulled a penny from this organization to do anything. It all comes from himself, people supporting our police and the community they serve, which is why I got involved, which is very important to me, and of course, our police officers. Uh, he's done an incredible job, uh, hoarding some money away for us to do some good things in the future. And, uh, I just hope I don't fail at keeping up what Perry has done for thirty-eight years. So, uh, it's an honor to work with you. Where'd you go, buddy? Oh, he's over here. It's an honor to be part of what you have started, uh, with, with Mr. Fliddell also. And, uh, I'm privileged to be here, so thank you.
For the record, my name is Andre and I am the prince of Palm Beach County. I've known Perry and worked with Perry for over forty years. And you'll notice, look how old he looks. Look how worn out he looks. Look how tired he looks. You're not gonna believe this, but I'm way older, but you'd never know it by looking at us. And the question is, why did this happen? You see, I've been taking ninety percent of the credit for everything we've ever done and Perry's done ninety percent of the work. And while this may be funny, it's not that funny to city staff and the heads of the departments because they're in the same relationship with the city commission.
Uh, I think you're out, I think you're out of order. Let me get the bailiff. We can, we can deal with you.
I'm good. Now, we're here tonight and look at all these wonderful people showed up. We have the gentleman from Ocean Properties. And I, I use the term loosely, not ocean properties, but gentleman. And Perry's very lucky to have all these people here tonight. And I don't mean he's lucky because they came to pay respect to Perry. He's lucky that the Florida Houston game wasn't tonight instead of last night because this would be a different room. Now, I've been with Perry now for forty years. And I'm just saying, he's an unusual character. And I'm sorry, a lot of you never got to meet him while he was still alive.
You need to wrap it up, Andre.
In any event, um, it's been my privilege and it's been my pleasure to have a very dear and close and best friend for forty years, the honorable, the incredible Perry Don Francesco.
They, they took all your time. Go ahead.
That happens all the time. You know, Andre, um, he's a cross dresser. A cross between Liberace and Peter Pan. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll get through this. Thank you, Mayor Carney. And I pronounce the R there.
Correctly.
And Commission. I know a lot of Conys being from Massachusetts.
I know you do.
Jackie Carney, Bobby Carney. I greatly appreciate this certificate of recognition. I'm honored tonight. And for the sake of time, I, I will be very brief. I'd like to express my sincere thanks to our organization, but especially our supporters. The residents, homeowners, associations, the businesses, many, philanthropists, foundations, and volunteers. Through the years, without them, none of this would have been possible. The groundwork for this organization began actually four decades ago in the mid-eighties. It was initially called the Delray Beach Police Scholarship Fund. Co-founder and current board member Andre Fliddell and I decided to create that organization to support the local police. Eventually that morphed into Delray Citizens for Delray Police, where not only did we support the police, their department, and the community they served. And it was very important for us to concentrate on police community. important for us to concentrate on police-community relations. I'd like to thank at this time longtime board members Dan Burns and Bill Daddio for their commitment over the years, and my sincere, respectful thank you to all of you tonight who attended this on my behalf. I'm most appreciative. I want to thank Diana and my children for all the support through the years, and I wish Andre, along with Chuck, who's going to be outstanding, and your new directors, Aaron Halliburton and Nick Sadowski, much success in the future of Delray Citizens for Delray Police. Thank you so very, very much.
Thank you very much, Perry. We're losing a quorum in the room. And Chuck, you do great work too.
Oh, he does. He absolutely does. Okay. What's this? Is this? Is this 4D? 4D. Great. I was looking for, got you. All right, the next is a presentation, a presentation of the recommendation by the Public Art Advisory Board to initiate a pilot program to wrap utility boxes in the downtown area.
Hello, I am Bob Costello.
Got to turn your microphone on, Bob.
I'm a member of the Public Arts Advisory Board, here to give some advice. So thank you all for coming to my presentation. Especially to Jeff, who has been...
Pull the mic closer to you, can you, or is it fixed?
Is it on?
There we go. So we have studied this for a couple of years, and we have some recommendations. Have some recommendations.
All you out there in the lobby, we can hear you in here. Please be quiet.
Okay, so we have some recommendations. And some of our neighboring cities, you know, like Boynton Beach, does a real nice job with their public arts. Slide two. Welcome to Delray Beach. So this is what we got. This has been called, you know, our front porch, Atlantic Avenue and such. This is, the first one is the Tennis Center. The next one is Old School Square. This is a box on Atlantic Avenue. And this other one is a city electrical panel in Old School, in the Old School Square park area. So not looking beautiful. So we could do better. So here is West Palm Beach. Now, they do a really nice job with their public arts. So I just happened to walk in the street and took a couple pictures. This is what they do. Next. So the bottom line, we're seeing $14,000 to get this pilot project started. I did a little research online. I found there's some money in the Public Arts Trust Fund, and we just need a part of it, $14,000, and we can get started on a pretty nice program. Next. So to make it confusing, there's different boxes owned by different entities. FPL is one of the entities, and they have some very strict rules, so we decided, forget about them. Their plan is, you give them $3,000, and they wrap the box, and you don't really get much choice. Well, we're an artsy city. We probably want to have local artists doing our own boxes, so we decided not the FPL boxes at this time. Next. By the way, they'll repaint the dirty boxes for $300. You just have to call them and say, "Paint it." In fact, one of the boxes in Old School Square, I called the FPL guy to confirm ownership of the box. I said, "Hey, who owns this? Your box? Can we get this fixed?" And he said, "Oh, that's a mess. We'll paint it." And two days later, they painted the box. So that got done just with me making a phone call. Next. So we have some recommendations for wraps. We looked at a few ideas, looked at what other cities are doing, what a great job they do, and here's some of our recommendations. Tennis Center's got to get done. It just, it's right there. It's very visible, especially last, a couple of months ago, they're in the open. So that's got to be done. Kilwinds is kind of a place where people hang out. So, and that's right in your face. It's got a little graffiti painted over. Next one. Big Owls, that's a giant box. Would look nice because that's in everybody's face. Hawkers is right across from Atlantic Crossing, so that's a very visible box, and it's got multicolored graffiti cover-ups. So not good. So there's a process. This process is pretty simple. I wrote it all up on a larger sheet, but we're thinking, we'd like to do a call to artists and have some, have some nice wraps done, because other cities have had a good job doing that. Okay, next. So, you know, Pompano Beach has a really nice job with their public art, but not here to talk about what they do. But we certainly could do better than these eyesore's on Atlantic Avenue. So we would like to spend the money that's already in the budget and make it Delray Beach beautiful. Any questions?
No.
I have one quick one. So you showed pictures of the old boxes, and they've got graffiti on them. Once the box is wrapped, what's to dissuade people from messing with the new pretty box?
Very good question. So an FPL representative came to our Public Arts Advisory Board meeting, and we asked that very question. And he said, "It seems that once these boxes are fully painted or covered or wrapped, that graffiti artists don't tag them because they're too busy." So they're, so he says their experience is they don't get tagged.
Okay, cool.
There's some ways to work around it. There's the, if we have public called artists and they design a wrap, we can order two wraps, and one for the box and one to put in storage just in case it gets messed up. So it'd be a secondary wrap.
Okay.
And the way these wraps have been built in the past, they last a long time.
That's great. Well, if the history says the artists leave it alone, then I think that's good.
That's what the FPL guy says.
Yeah.
Ms. Gasol, any question?
Sure.
No, I'm good.
Thank you. I like this. I think it's quite a bit more attractive than what we currently are looking at. But have you worked with the, are you working with the Public Works Department on this?
Missy Barletto has been kept up to speed in what we're looking at.
Okay. She, there's no problems, we foresee. So that cost is for the four boxes?
For the first four boxes.
Okay.
This is based on what we were told by Palm Beach County Traffic or Palm Beach County...
On behalf of the Public Art Board, I had a conversation with the Public Arts Director at Palm Beach County, and the costs and the process are very much based on what Palm Beach County has done fairly recently, within the last few months.
Right, I was saying that cost up there was for the four boxes.
$14,000 for four boxes.
Okay, thanks. And you have that in your fund? And you have, your fund is a total of 23?
The fund currently has about...
There's about 23 available. There's still an outstanding contract that hasn't been fully paid off.
Got it.
So there's, there's actually more than there. And again, that it's $3,500 per box. The art director in Palm Beach County had said, "That is more than you'll need."
Great.
So we should not have a problem staying within that budget. We may even be able to afford a fifth one under that budget. We made sure that when I transferred those costs to the Public Art Board, I encouraged them to be very conservative and a lot more than we might need so that we don't ever have to come back and ask for more.
Well, that's all money in your budget, so you've already got it to utilize in that manner. Thank you.
Commissioner Burns?
I don't have any questions. I think it's a great idea, and I support it.
Commissioner Long?
Just to say thank you, Bob, and to the rest of the Public Arts Advisory Board for coming up with this. Way to turn like an eyesore into an opportunity. This feels very Delray to me. It reminds me of what we're doing with the DDA right now in terms of a call to artists to help design the new DDA logos. I love the idea of having local artists turning these into like art installations. It just feels very Delray. So I think this is a great concept. I'd love to see these sort of four very prominent locations as a proof of concept, and then we can hopefully continue to do it with other, other areas over the years as we have more money in that budget. So, yeah, well done. I'm excited to see this. This is awesome.
So we did pick those four locations because as Jeff described, it's our, it's our front porch. It's where people come to visit us, and those are the most prominent boxes.
Is the Public Arts Board going to choose the various designs for the, for the box? They're not, you're going to have different designs on each one, right?
So there'll be a call to artists, and generally, we review these things, and you know, we would, well, I'm not sure exactly legally, but we would like to review them and make recommendations on the ones we want. And hey, we're a bunch of artsy guys. We'll find the nice ones. We'll make it beautiful.
Sounds like a good start for our boxes. So do we need to, we're just going to authorize the City Commander's Office?
Yep, consensus to proceed in this regard if there's interest to do so, and we'll work collaboratively with all involved to get to the best place possible.
Sounds perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is a presentation regarding outreach programs to assist local small business enterprises.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners? At a previous meeting, you all had sort of asked, what is it that now that we're not moving forward with disparity study and dealing with some of the things that would come from that, you asked, what are we going to do to assist our local small businesses? Our focus moves to overall small businesses now. So one of the things we took a look at, and I have with me Rob Evans, our Economic Development Manager, and Eugene Bittaker, our Purchasing Manager, everybody's got a little slice of this here. So we started talking about what are some of the potential things that we could do. We have spoken to the Commission about some of these before. There are some things we have done, and there are some things that we'll be hopefully looking to do. One of the things is, we wanted to come up with a definition of what a small business is for the purposes of what we're doing. What we kind of think is a good target is a business with less than 10 employees. Now, that may change, depend on the type of businesses we're working with over different programs, but we thought that was a good target number to say, is a small business for the purposes of the City of Delray Beach. Actually, you know what? Let me use this. Like I said, it will be a little bit fluid. I mean, if we're looking at a construction project, you're probably going to look at somebody with more employees than that, although if we're looking at a small consulting project, it may be two, three people, no more. That's, that's really the group we're kind of going for. And what are our goals here? Our goals would be to, I always forget to keep this advanced, to increase opportunities for local small businesses to do work with the City of Delray Beach, as well as to assist them in growing and thriving in the City of Delray Beach. So we've got that two-pronged approach to it. So one of the things we can do is, is we can start looking at, who have we got here? And I'm going to ask Gene to kind of take over at this point and explain our next slide.
Mr. Bittaker, be sure to speak into the microphone, please, up front. Thank you.
As far as the number of Delray Beach-based businesses, the number of Delray-based businesses that respond to formal procurements, and the Delray Beach-based businesses...
And stay close to it.
Closer to you. Put the mic forward. That may help.
And as far as the keeping count of all the businesses that we deal with through contracts, through solicitations, through quotes, we don't keep the records of that. We don't have a record of all the contracts that we deal with small businesses. The thing is that we have a difficult time recognizing what a small business would be here in Delray. As we explained in the first slide, a small business would be 10 employees or under. The dollar value, we haven't determined yet, or haven't, haven't determined yet. So at this time, we don't have the numbers on the contracts yet, but we do reach out to them. I'm going to go to the next slide here and review our process, examine and identify potential improvements, informal processes, quote gathering. Those two processes and solicitation, they're, the informal process is usually under 5,000. We don't have all the required documents like asking for financials and such in those. The quote gathering is another thing, like quick quotes for the neighborhood community. That's another informal procurement that we do go out for a bid on. We know local companies that can bid on these contracts, but also we have other ones. Just a sidebar on that, on the quick quote, we have a contractor that started out as a small business, and he was winning the quick quote procurements, and he's now bidding on our larger projects. So that is working very well. As far as the formal processes, we do, do get, from the departments, we get information from them on known vendors that they consider local and small businesses. These formal processes are usually for larger projects, but you might have some participation in janitorial and also landscaping, landscaping solicitations. But that goes out on our e-procurement platform, BidNet, so it goes out to hundreds of different vendors that can participate. And then the next thing, number two, is examining requirements on a case-by-case basis, and the insurance requirements. We've just finally started to ask risk to make sure that the procurement meets the insurance requirements. You sometimes have smaller procurements that you don't need that, that large insurance requirement, and risk management now is looking at that process.
So basically, these two items, the last two slides, pretty much are, we're going to do our best to try to collect more data to know who we're doing business with, and then we're going to be able to identify some of the improvements of how we can make the ground a little easier for small business that doesn't necessarily have the insurance capability or such to make sure we can get them. And hopefully, we'll have more examples, much like the one Mr. Bittaker brought up, where somebody was, came in as a small business, got a lot of our business, started growing, and is becoming a more stable, larger business at this point. Mr. Evans?
Yes, hello, Mayor and Commissioner. My name is Rob Evans. I'm the Economic Development Manager for the City of Delray Beach, and I'm going to be working to do outreach to the small business groups to let them know about the Office of Economic Development and about, you know, how we can help them. And also, we'll be marketing the Small Business Expo in May to small businesses to let them know that we're going to be having this expo so they can come and learn how to do business with the City of Delray Beach. Also, the year of 2025 is the year of the small business, so I'm going to be collaborating very closely with our partners, with the CRA, the DDA, the Chamber. And we all, you know, come together, and we're, we're creating these different programs for small businesses. So I'll be attending those groups and also looking at other programs and seminars that we can provide as well to the small businesses.
So as Rob mentioned, we do have four very clear partner, or four partnership of four of the city, the Chamber of Commerce, the DDA, and the CRA. I have spoken to all the executive directors of these groups. Everybody's on board, particularly looking at, one of the things we want to look at is a seminar series that'll rotate amongst all of us, and it's basically making available to small businesses or large businesses if they want to show up, all of the things you need to know to run a business. What's really interesting is we find out there's a lot of people say, "I have a business," because they hung a shingle. They don't necessarily know all the ins and outs of running a small business. They don't understand unemployment insurance, or insurance, or why you need an attorney. So what we're thinking about is a series that kind of gives them insight into, okay, you've got a business. Here's the things you need and why you need them, and here's how to find them, as well as giving them some overview of some of the regulatory issues you, you face as a, as a small business, particularly very small, and people are running out of their house, you need to have a BTR. It's required. If you want to do business with the city, you need to have a BTR. You need to be registered with the state. You need to have a federal ID number, and you're going to need insurance. Important thing for them to know is, you don't need the insurance until you have the contract with us. You don't need to have it beforehand. It's just, once we get the contract in place, you have to have it. So you don't need to run out and buy it. These are the things that... buy it. These are the things that, I'll be quite frank with you, I started my own business at one point, and some of these things I didn't know. And that's how I know, a lot of people don't know this. Mr. Evans has started several businesses as well. We had this conversation about, we know things now that we can then import into others. So, basically, that's some of the things we can look at doing. Seminar series, I think, is an easy one. Also, most of these things we've just told you about, probably with the exception of the Small Business Expo, are not going to cost us money. The Small Business Expo, because we require a lot of staff to be there to tell people what we do, and we use the gym at Pompeii for that, that has some cost to it. All these other things are very minimal cost, if any at all. We can host them at any of our partners' offices or at the library, wherever may be appropriate. And the hope is, as we do a seminar series, we also reach out and survey the attendees and say, what would you like us to bring you more information on? This will also be an opportunity to plug them in with some of the other organizations that help small businesses here. SCORE, the Service Corps of Retired Persons, Retired Executives, as well as with the SBDC, who's been here and has had an office, the Chamber of Commerce or otherwise, for a very long time. And there's still a lot of people in our city who don't know that they exist and what they do. So, it's a free service to them. We just got to get it out there and let people know it exists. So, we really do want to help and reach out and do everything we can do. Again, these are some of the potential things we'll jump right into. We're working on setting our Small Business Expo. It'll be in Small Business Month of May, and we'll move forward from there. If you all have any suggestions, we're more than happy to entertain any of those. We're looking for any way possible that we can reach these folks and help them do business in the City of Delray, both with the city and on their own while they're based here.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Cassell, anything?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I think that, I appreciate you working with the DDA and the Chamber, but I think what we're talking about is people that would have no connection to them, people in the community. And I think perhaps we might, we'd be asking probably our Communications Department, but maybe if there is something going on in the city, no, just to do a post, you know, we're open, you know, taking applications for this type of work or that type of work, something that a small business in the city could apply for. Because I think one of the problems is that, maybe there aren't enough small jobs for the small businesses, but when there are those occasions, it would be nice if someone local who's qualified got that job. And the idea is, how do we connect the individual to the application? And I don't know that the DDA and the Chamber do that, because I don't see these people as necessarily involved there. I think that's more, you know, email, a post on our Facebook post, or maybe something on our website. That's just my opinion, but I appreciate that and thank you very much.
Commissioner, the intent of the partners is to make sure that we're reaching out to anybody who serves businesses in the city as an avenue of public information, as well as whatever resources they may be able to bring to the table.
Exactly.
Our signature event for making sure that small businesses are aware of what we do, and I say this only because I want everybody to hear it and share with their friends, is our Small Business Expo.
Right.
What we do there is we'll have some speakers. We'll say, hey, here's resources that are available. We'll talk about doing business with the city. And we also have representatives from each of the departments who actually do some of the purchasing, particularly the informal purchasing. Because I think one of the things I said at it last year is, the city purchases just about everything. Anything from medical supplies for EMS, all the way down to pencils and papers and all sorts of things like that. So, most anybody who walks in the door can do business with the city, because we probably buy the product or service that they provide. So, it really is having an opportunity for them to walk around the room, meet people from different departments, and hear the exact things they buy, plus having the people who buy for the departments meet someone who, when they're doing an informal quote, which may just require phone calls, they can keep them in mind and think, hey, I should give that person a call. They explain to me what they do, and that's exactly what I'm looking for.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Burns?
Yes, I think I heard it, but I just want to clarify. So, I'm glad that you have identified or defined what a small business is, first of all, and then to do some outreach to find out who falls under that category. So, before any job advertisements, find out, I think I heard you say that you're going to do that, to find out who these business owners are so that you can get a list or, and then provide these seminars and workshops. But, you know, they are out there and they are not affiliated with the Chamber and the DDA. So, I'm glad to hear. I think I heard you say that. So, I'm just getting clarification. That's what I heard.
Yes, and certainly one of the things that Mr. Evans and I have already talked about is he needs to get out, find some of these organizations out there in which businesses are hiding in, whether it's a homeowners association or some other more relaxed networking organization, and let them know the resources that are available and to let them know what we can do to help them.
And lots of marketing for that initial meeting to get people to come out. Lots of marketing. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Markner?
I don't have any questions. I think what you're doing is great. I think the small business community will embrace this, and I'd be happy to participate along the way as well. I think this is a great initiative. Excellent. Thank you.
Commissioner Long?
Yeah, great work. Very supportive of this. I'm supportive of anything that helps our small businesses. And, you know, I do think we should be leaning into our relationships with our nonprofit partners like the Chamber and the DDA, just to ensure we're not doing things that are redundant. I know there are, there's other low-hanging fruit that we can grab that maybe those organizations aren't hitting, but I also want to make sure we're all rowing in the same direction. So, I think really working with those groups is going to be critical. And great work with this. I just want to make it clear, though, that this does not meet the same needs as a disparity study. They're two completely separate things. That's a conversation for another day.
Correct.
But I just want to be clear that we're not conflating the two things. They have nothing to do with each other. This is a great idea and I'm fully in support of it. So, great work.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item. Yeah, it's the National, it's a proclamation for the National. Right?
National Public Safety Telecommunications Week.
You want me to read that there? Okay, perfect, because the others have been approved. National Public Safety Telecommunications Week proclamation. Supposed to be to Chief Major. I don't know where he is. Maybe out in the thing, but otherwise, I see stand-ins in the back, which would be perfect. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time requiring the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics to protect lives and preserve property. Whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical point of contact for our citizens in emergency situations, providing lifesaving instructions, maintaining composure under pressure, and coordinating rapid responses in times of crises. And whereas the safety and effectiveness of the emergency responders depend on the quality and accuracy of information obtained by public safety telecommunications at the City of Delray Beach Police Department's Emergency Communications Center. And whereas these professionals serve as a vital link for law enforcement, relaying essential information, monitoring activities through radio and computer system, ensuring the safety of police officers. And whereas the public safety telecommunications of the Delray Beach Police Department work tirelessly 24/7, demonstrating exceptional skill, professionalism, and dedication in handling emergencies, apprehending criminals, and safeguarding residents, visitors, and travelers alike. And whereas since 1991, Congress has designated the second full week of April as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week to recognize and honor their invaluable contributions to public safety. Now, therefore, I, Thomas F. Carney, Jr., Mayor of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, on behalf of the City Commission, to hereby proclaim the week of April 13th through April 19th, 2025, as National Public Safety Telecommunications, Telecommunicators Week, in the City of Delray Beach, and urge all residents to appreciate all of the men and women whose diligence, expertise, and professionalism serve as a lifeline between the community and emergency responders, keeping our cities and citizens safe.
If I could just have 30 seconds, I just want to say thank you as Chief of Police of the Delray Beach Police Department. The communications section, the dispatchers do so much for us. They're the umbilical cord. They receive all the phone calls and they put them out to the officers, and it's a super stressful job. And in my mind, you're like the unsung heroes that make it all happen. So, thank you all so very much for what you do. Really appreciate it.
The next side that we have moved these presentations, because we have former House Representative Irv Slossberg here to talk about it, but this, I'll read the resolution. Resolution 7625, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, supporting legislation that requires hands-free phones while driving, providing an effective date, and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mayor Carney, and thank you Vice Mayor Long, Vice Mayor Long, for bringing this forward, and the Commissioners for hearing this. I'm Irv Slossberg, and I was your State Representative for 12 years. Before that, I was an entrepreneur, and then one day, my daughter died in a car crash. And then I said, you know what? I'm going to go do something and change the traffic laws. I went up to Tallahassee with the cooperation, I'm a Democrat, with the cooperation of the Republicans, me and the Republicans, we basically changed all the laws in the state of Florida. And there was never a seatbelt law until 2009. It's named after my daughter, Dory. There was never any money for driver's ed. Now, every time you get a ticket, $5 of that money goes to driver's ed directly to the county. So far, $85 million. And there was never any, on our turnpike, we never had any guardrails or anything. We put the guardrails on, and I did it as a team. There's one thing that, unfinished business. And unfinished business was distracted driving. Distracted driving is a huge issue. And we passed in the legislature that it's hands-free in school zones and hands-free in construction zones. But the rest of Florida is not hands-free. So, anyway, what we're doing is we're going to people, great people like you guys, and have a resolution while this is running through Tallahassee. And I just wanted to express my appreciation for, I mean, the City of Delray Beach being so proactive on this. And the resolution basically says that it's going to be hands-free throughout the state of Florida, not just in school zones and in construction zones. Right now, it is only in school zones and only in construction zones. And so, what I have for you for Atlantic High School, reminding all the parents and guardians in line, the pet peeve with principals is, all the parents and guardians in line waiting for the kids, they're on their cellphone all the time, and they shouldn't be. They should be watching. And so, they don't realize it's the law. It's the law, hands-free in school zones. And so, all this is, is telling them, whoever's waiting in line for the kids, it's the law. And they don't know it. And, you know, like, you guys know it. And you guys, with the resolution, want to make it hands-free throughout the state of Florida, but it is the law. And so, I brought you a couple signs for Atlantic High School. And then, another thing is, the teacher's in line, you know? It's dangerous. I mean, not only can they kill the kids, they can kill the teachers. And so, I have a couple of these telling for the teachers who are shepherding these people that, hey, it's the law. And it's bright colored, and I just wanted to take a photo op with you guys so I could pass it throughout the other cities so that they can understand what the City of Delray Beach is leading. And if it's okay, I could just go back there or whatever, whatever you want to do. I can just go in front and...
But anyway, we need to, this is in the form of a resolution, so I do need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. This is done in other countries, too. I mean, this concept is...
I can verify that. We lived in Australia 20 years ago. The whole country is hands-free. And it was heavily policed by the Police Department, so people knew you were going to get a ticket. And it just worked, and no one complained about it.
I'll give you a number you won't believe. 1.3 million people every year die in car crashes. And you know what? You know, it used to be drunken driving, also, not that drunken driving and speeding is not a problem, but now, it's all distracted driving. And when you're driving and you're on 95, you go, oh, my God, I got to wait another hour. And it's a huge problem.
You're right.
So, where are we taking the picture, Mr. Mayor? Yeah.
How you doing, Irving?
Good to see you.
Don't stand next to me.
You have to stand next to robbing me.
Okay.
How do you want to start?
The City of Delray Beach.
Sure.
Thank you guys for being here.
Let me ask John.
Atlantic High School, they need it. Everyone needs it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Irv, for everything you've done for safety for Florida.
Thank you. Public safety is our number-one priority.
We've already approved the consent agenda, right? Was that next? We have comments first, right? So, we're end of all, or end of this now. We're now getting into the public comment section. First, the city manager's response to inquiries and highlights.
I yod at this time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, great. We are now at the point of the public comments. If you have anything you wish to speak on an agenda or non-agenda items, please come up to the lectern, give your name and address. For the record, you each have three minutes, and please make sure you sign in in the little book so we know who you are. Anyway, Mr. Halbert?
Good evening again, Mayor and Commissioners. Chuck Halbert, 120 Northwest Fourth Avenue. I'm going to be reading because as I turn 68 in a few weeks, the memory's going away. So, I stand before you, right now, not as a board member of the Delray Citizens of Delray Police, the Arch Garage, the Chamber, and other activities I do in town. I stand before you as a 34-year resident and business owner in this city. Pam and I raised our kids in Delray in the public schools, and thankfully, both our boys and our first grandchild, Benjamin, settled in Delray Beach in their own homes. And after all, we are the best city in Florida, based on my little bit of bias. From time to time, my kids, when my kids were little, I remember community events where our police were out and about doing good in the community. Officer Jeff Miller always led the Easter egg on at Miller Park. And it was that community policing that led me to get involved in supporting our police, actually about 30 years ago. As a business owner, I've always been a strong believer that generally, you get what you pay for. And my simple thoughts on the contract, which I'm not going to talk about really, is simply that I believe Delray Beach should be at the top tier in Palm Beach County, along with the other cities. I don't know the numbers or any of that. I leave that to you folks to work out. Why do I say this? Because we've become a great training ground for young officers, who, after investing, from my research, in two-plus years of service academy training equipment, over $300,000 into each officer. They go, and then they go and leave our department. We must then train for replacement. And I guess with lower pay, we are getting less qualified officers, because they're going to go elsewhere. Back when Chief Major was hired, we were down around 20 officers, and he implemented some new recruiting procedures and closed that gap. Now, we are sadly back in the same position, where young officers don't want to serve our community if that compensation is better in other cities. Since June of '24, I understand we have lost over 10 officers... twenty-four, I understand we have lost over ten officers. I saw three more today left and I'm really disappointed in Chad Mason leaving us with more in hiring stages of departments. The fact is, we are losing our department's institutional knowledge through retirements and there is going to be a gap in officers invested in our department if we can only keep them for two to three years. In my opinion, our Police Department is one of the main aspects that make our city great. As a businessman who must compete against good competition all the time, I urge you to take a good look at what other cities in Palm Beach County are doing and help keep our Police Department staff with quality, community service-oriented officers. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Montre Bennett, three-twenty-three Northwest Second Avenue. First, I want to say happy birthday tomorrow to my cousin and my son. They both share the same birthday. They're both deceased. Malachi Bennett and Serge Gaspar. Next, I want to say about the small businesses, it is a place that y'all could get some small business from. That's the Petron Brother Network. And that can be a partnership that's very well worth Darius' money. And then, if y'all supporting and budgeting for this Pride Festival, I'm gonna say it again, y'all really need to support Black History because it ain't no history without Black history. Last, I will say, with a better good news. So, yours truly is running as Favorite Chef with Carla Hall. And I would appreciate all y'all votes. I'm in the first round. I'm in first place right now. The last day for the first round to vote is Thursday at nine o'clock. I'm hoping I can stay at number one to get to the second round. But I think it's two more rounds. And y'all can go to HTTPS, semicolon, slash-slash, faychef.com/2025, forward slash Montre-Bennett. Or you can get me on Facebook, Montre Bennett. And click my link and vote for Montre for Favorite Chef.
Pleasure, Montre.
Hi, Judy Malika, one-twenty-two Northwest Third Avenue. I'm here to speak out against the proposed removal of the Pride Festival and concert from the list of city events. Of the twenty-one city-sponsored events, it's telling and deeply concerning that only one has been singled out. It feels less like a logistical decision and more like someone chose the easy target. That choice is not just disappointing, it's discriminatory. Whether it's out of fear for reprisal or not, it's discriminatory. Now, more than ever, our LGBTQ plus community needs our support. Pride isn't just a celebration, it's a statement of inclusion, acceptance and visibility. Removing this event sends the exact opposite message. It suggests that Delray Beach is willing to step backwards to silence a community that has fought hard to be seen. This city prides itself on character and community. Let's live up to that. Let's not shove people back in the closet. Let's open the door. Delray Beach should be a place where unity is celebrated, not censored. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Rachel Bergman. I live at one-eleven Northwest Eleventh Street in Delray Beach. And I've come to speak about the Roy Simon property that's under contract in regards to the abandonment or the reduction of the easement next to his property to allow three homes to be built on a point-seven-two-acre lot. This would substantially change the fabric of the neighborhood. The large native oaks that are used for shade would be cut down where there's a large population of blue herons that nest there every year. The crowding of the homes with zero lot lines is not consistent with our neighborhood and we don't have to give the developers, who always want more and more in a small space.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm saying, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a public hearing. And when you were speaking on that item, you wait till that item's on, we were discussing. And I know you're doing it now, but I'm gonna have, give you a chance to come back up when we get to the item on the agenda. I'm sorry?
It's not on the agenda.
Isn't it on the agenda?
Not tonight.
I'm sorry, what is the address?
She's not, is she on seven A?
Seven A is twelve-oh-one George Bush Boulevard.
My address or Roy's address?
The address of the property that you're referencing.
Two-oh-one Northwest Eleventh Street.
I apologize. Continue.
Okay. So, the crowding of homes with zero lot lines is not consistent with our neighborhood and we don't have to give in to the developers who always want more and more space, more and more in a small space. The overdevelopment of our neighborhood will only benefit the developers and not the residents. We and the Lake Island neighborhood strongly oppose the replating of this property by the city, by the city, at the request of any developer. I have a four-year-old and she loves to play outside under the green space. Thank you so much.
What's your address again?
Roy's house is two-zero-one Northwest Eleventh Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Stephanie Elman, the Delray Beach Chamber of Commerce. I just want to express my goodness. I just want to express my appreciation for the city's partnership and the Delray affair that we had this past weekend. And, interesting. Okay. And I also want to thank the Commission for letting us expand it to the five-hundred block. And I want to say a special thank you to the city staff, to streets, to the EMTs, and especially the Police Department. It sounds like they're circling right now. Because they work before, during and after the event to make sure everyone had a safe and fun time. So, thanks very much to the city.
Thank you. It's a good event.
Hello, Albert Richwagen, two-nine-eight Northeast Sixth Avenue, Delray Beach. I'm here to ask what is being done for the subculture parking issue that has been going on since September when they opened. They paid a large amount of money for, in lieu of parking. Every time I speak to the owner, he says, not my problem. I paid my amount of money and it's the city's problem. The police do everything they can for the enforcement, but the people know that they'll be gone by the time they can arrive. And plus, they have bigger things to deal with. So, I don't bother the police with it. Mr. Jim Rose does. I also want to know how a restaurant, bar restaurant, coffee shop, slash-bar restaurant, is allowed to open with no dedicated or marked handicap parking space, no garbage enclosure, no bike rack, and numerous other issues that have arisen since he's been opened. He's a bad neighbor. He, the retribution is real. I've had to step back from any activity from it at all. So, that's why you hear a lot from Mr. Rose, because I just, I can't deal with the stress. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Ridley. I live at two-ten Northwest Second Avenue, Delray Beach. Two things. One of the things I've been asking for the bench to be fixed at Libby Wesley is still broken. So, hope that goes on record that it's either taken out or fixed because it's very dangerous on the corner of Fifth Avenue. So, I hope you look into getting that done. So, I want to formally on record that I've been asking someone to take care of it and it still have not been taken care of. So, please, look and it's very dangerous. And second, I listened to the news. They're taking fluoride out of water nationwide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Margaret Keller, seven-two-nine Southeast Third Avenue. And I'm gonna make this really fast. I'm just really happy that you're addressing the sober homes because we have a major problem. And I'm in the seven-hundred block of Southeast Third Avenue and I believe we have five sober homes right in that area right there. And around the corner, probably another four or five. It's just, we don't know our neighbors. We don't know our neighbors. And secondly, I just want to support the police and I believe they really, and all the first responders really, I think that they need a raise. And thank you. I appreciate the officers.
Thank you.
Lee Stern, forty-five East Road. And I'm here on a righteous evening. I'm very fortunate to rent my property to one of your police officers. The neighborhood and, or the neighbors and the neighbors at large are very happy and proud to have a police officer living next door and close by. Having the police car parked in the driveway is impactful to the neighbors and adds value to the neighborhood and the city. Everyone seems happy. The neighbors celebrate every chance to interact with the neighborhood policemen. They want to talk about the car. They want to hear about the latest story, where the police officer put his life at risk for the community. But then they ask in bewilderment about the failed negotiation for an equitable salary for the police, knowing that these, knowing what these heroes do for us selflessly every day. Everyone's all smiles except the high-achieving, noble, risk-taking public servant. We have a problem to solve and the problem is a crisis. Our police officers that we rely on, in some cases to save our lives and at other times to align us to the definition of a good citizen, feel taken advantage of, not by the people they serve, but the leaders that are obstructing equity. There is no worse feeling than being taken advantage of. My words are not a referendum of unfairness, meaning comparing our Police Department to the rank and file of other departments or township leaders. For example, I don't think it's constructed to compare any Delray Department's ability to affect self-serving salary increases to the current negotiation. But it is important to not to deny those that have voted for raises because they could, or ignore neighboring Police Department salaries that are significantly higher than ours, or deny the self-inflicted and costly police officer exodus that is underway. Furthermore, and equally insulting, leadership is arguing and spreading false narratives instead of telling the truth on public forums like Delray Raw. The issue from my perspective is the city decision-makers, there's a lack of leadership. I've always been intrigued when I've had the opportunity to ask people that have either reported to me, worked with me, or were willing to answer the question, are you paid what you're worth? Not one person has ever said to me, absolutely. The answer is always no, including me. I don't believe I've ever been paid what I'm worth. So, you're beginning a conversation at odds with one another and overcoming the odds and coming to a consensus is the art of the deal that very few are any good at. Negotiations aren't designed to create winners and losers, but rather, for each side to give a little, get a little, accepting whatever hurts me is gonna hurt you, ending with a fair and equitable result. Clearly, many of you have asked the same questions as leaders in Delray. Am I paid what I'm worth? And concluded, hell, no, and gotten raises. So, why are we treating the men and women in blue differently than we treat ourselves? My conclusion to date is that it's leadership. Self-serving, selfish and misguided are not leadership characteristics. Leadership is selfless. Leadership puts those ahead of yourself.
Thank you very much, sir.
Well, can someone lend some time to me? Yield some time?
Nope. Three minutes, sir.
Is it just not because we like the content? Or is it just three minutes?
That's really unfair, sir. And I would cut you off just for saying that.
Well, you could.
Right.
And are you going to?
Yes.
Oh, that's too bad. It's really too bad.
Cutting you off because it's three minutes.
Very unfortunate.
Those were the instructions.
I had something to say. Is there another forum that I can conclude?
Come back next week.
Come back next week?
Sure.
I will see you next week and we'll get to the second half. Hopefully, it'll be done before then.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Michael Stern. I live at two-oh-eight Southwest Seventh Street in Delray, directly across from the water treatment plant. Number one, I'd like to thank Chuck Halberg and the Delray Police who do a phenomenal job here. Number two, a brief comment on the hands-free school zone signs. I don't see any reason why Delray doesn't adopt a hands-free policy for the entire city. It's way beyond time. By principle, reason for coming is the water treatment plant where I've lived across the street for nine consecutive years. I have experienced extreme magnetic radiation in my house, which appears to be the epicenter. I have a meter which has measured it repeatedly for years. It causes such vibration that my computers disconnect, my internet disconnects, my fans go on and off. I've called the city treatment center endlessly for eight years. Nobody ever responds, ever. And I hear a whirling, a hydraulic whirling, like a processing piece of equipment that is obviously underground. I don't know what's doing it that would treat water, but they have these sort of things as nuclear processing reactors. I'm not suggesting that that's there, but something is wrong. And I have proof. And I've attempted to solve this privately. And as a last resort, I'm coming here to put this in the public domain. I'll speak with anybody on the planet. I do not have dementia, but it's seriously affecting me. I've spoken to neighbors that have been there. It's an old Haitian neighborhood, have been there for fifty, sixty years. I said, do you ever feel anything or hear any vibration? Oh, yeah. We know all about it. It's part of living down here. Whatever Delray's got going on in that industrial complex, you need to look into it. That's it.
Thank you very much. Any other members?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Elizabeth McHugh. I live on Southeast Third Avenue. I will try to be brief. Public safety first. Our police officers are not paid enough. I think instead of painting utility boxes, we could put that money towards the police. Second thing, I think, is my neighborhood is absolutely drowning in sober homes. Drowning. It's a cancer in our neighborhood. The police fire paramedics are there constantly. All you have to do is pull up the records for Osceola Park. Now, I suggest that every third nine-one-one call to the same residence, you start fining heavily the property owner, whether they're in-state, out-of-state. They get fined every time those cops have to go to that house over and over and over again. And then we'll create some money to give to these police. And I would also like and appreciate very, very much if we could have a meeting like this, addressing just the sober homes, nothing else. Just give us a night to please, please, address this issue. It's just insane. Thank you very much. I want to thank all the police and first responders. We love you. We love you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Andrea Bruton, seven-oh-three Placetown, Delray Beach, Florida. I am a twenty-nine-year veteran with the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. But first and foremost, I'm a resident of Delray Beach. And I am concerned about the quality of officers that we're gonna have in Delray. Yes, PBSO has great benefits, great pay, and we have great officers. And we want the same here in Delray. So, I'm pushing that you keep the officers that our taxpayer dollars are paying. Let's pay them well. We're training them and then we're giving them to other agencies. So, let's keep our officers here and stable in the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public wishing to participate in public comment? Seeing none, public comment is over. Need a motion now to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We are now going to, do I leave now?
No.
No.
I'll be at Dada's if you need me. I'll pick something up for everybody. You know, Montre should have brought food for the class if you want to know the details.
Do you want me to read the resolution, Mayor?
Wait, aren't you, hang on a second.
I'm sorry.
Aren't you the, you don't work for?
I'm sorry?
This is STOM.
Oh, yeah, but it's not my project. I don't represent him anymore.
How long have you not represented him?
Oh, two years.
Your name is on his, aren't you his agent of service on his things? You told me you represent him.
Years ago.
You have not represented, you're not, you haven't been his agent of service?
I have nothing to do with this project at all.
This, do you have other projects? So, you have something to do with it?
No, not to my knowledge.
Are you one-hundred percent sure about that?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Because you told me you represent him.
I did, when he first came into town.
Can we take a one-minute break?
Take a break.
Okay. Why? My name's not on that LLC.
Go look it up. I just looked it up.
My name's on this LLC for twelve-oh-one?
It was changed last month.
Huh?
Yes, it was changed last month.
Oh, they finally got around to changing it. I have nothing to do with it. Registered agent, by the way, is a ministerial job.
I know, but you represent the guy.
I know, but you represent the guy.
Nothing anymore. I represented when he first came into town.
Well, it's a month ago.
What do you want me to do? I don't care. I really don't care.
It's, it's a plat. It's going through. It's going to get approved for everybody, but that's not the point.
The conflict issue is not whether or not something's going to go through and be approved, right? It's whether or not you believe that you, you, there's a financial interest that you could ignore.
I have no financial interest in this project at all.
I looked at this one in particular.
It just changed. And there's others. You told me that you represent him.
I did before.
You're, you're saying your name is not on any LLCs?
Being, being a registered agent isn't representing somebody. It does not establish attorney-client relationship. I hate, I mean, if it did, then, then.
You're paid by him if you're his registered agent.
I'm sorry?
You're paid if you're a registered agent.
Registered agent.
There's a statute that says you have to notify if you're the registered agent. If you don't want to, I just think this commission should, you shouldn't vote if you're, if you're the registered agent on the guy's projects.
I'm going to not vote.
Thank you.
In the sake of clarifying the position. But I am not a registered agent. Registered agent does not create an attorney-client relationship under the Florida bar rules, which is what I'm governed by.
You're a registered agent for some of his LLCs.
Mayor, in abundance of caution, if you feel that you want to recuse yourself in this under-
If you've got, got a commissioner that tells me that she thinks there's a conflict?
I can pull up, I'll, I'll prove it. It's not, you told me. I look it up on every project now because that's why I want us to sign these conflict forms. So I don't, you know, you just say, "I don't have a conflict." I don't want to sit on a, on a commission that has conflicts.
I know, but again, signing conflict affidavits is way beyond what-
No, it's a really good idea because it says then you have to do your due diligence and make sure you're not on his LLCs as his agent for service.
Mayor, you can legally abstain from this to ensure a fair proceeding, free from potential bias or prejudice under Florida Statute 286, if you don't believe you have an actual conflict.
It's your decision.
I'll, I'll, I'll-
It's your call. I'm just giving you the options.
I'll abstain because the issue was raised. And then I'll, then I'll educate people on what the Florida bar says, which is determinative.
I know, but I'm just saying, if you told me you worked for him, I, it's not like I knew that on my own.
Years ago, when he first came into town.
But then, stuff online shouldn't be-
Well-
So, so under, under the ethics code-
Again, being a registered agent is a, is a ministerial thing. Otherwise, corporate services in Tallahassee would have an attorney-client relationship with every attorney in town.
I know, but we're a small city and we don't want to be looking like we have conflicts.
Please don't tell me the legal rules.
Mayor, under the ethics code, if you haven't had a relationship for a number of years, and it also, it's a percentage of, you know, how much, what, what kind of financial benefit you have. If you don't feel that you have an actual conflict, you do not have to recuse yourself under the Flor, under the ethics code.
I'm going to recuse myself.
But under 286, to assure a fair proceeding, if you feel that that is appropriate.
Fine. I'll, I'll, we'll do it under two, on the Florida Statute 286.
And just in a, and just so the record is clear, under that, you do not have to fill out a conflict form.
I understand. Yep.
Understood. Okay, so you, you do need to step off the dais and the vice mayor would take over.
Thank you.
No, I do now?
Yes, sir.
Even if it's no conflict?
Because it, yes. It's to ensure that the proceedings are fair and you're not influencing anyone.
I'm sorry. You told me.
I will expect a legal opinion from the, from the attorney's office explaining that the role of a registered agent does not establish an attorney-client relationship in the state of Florida.
I don't, I, I don't-
I, I don't know the statute. You told me you worked for the guy. I know, but then, well, you said it.
What would you say your opinion is?
Mayor, for the record, my opinion is not that a registered agent-
Nor is mine, but if you say you work for the gentleman, I'm trying to help you.
Right, years ago.
This is going to be one of those meetings tonight, huh? Lot happening.
Okay, so we need to read the quasi judicial rules, so let me grab those for you.
I don't have them, yeah.
Thanks, Lynn. All right, I'm going to read the quasi judicial rules. This hearing shall be conducted in accordance with quasi judicial rules. The applicant and the city shall be allowed fifteen minutes each to present their case. The public shall be allowed to speak for three minutes each for maximum of six minutes if the person represents an organization or group of people who are present but agree not to speak. The commission staff and the applicant may be allowed to cross-examine a witness. The city or the applicant will be allowed to offer rebuttal testimony. The decision to approve or deny an application or appeal may not be legally made upon personal views as to whether a project is a good project or not, nor may a decision be based on the numbers of citizens who support or oppose a particular project. The law requires that all decisions must be made on the basis of whether the project meets requirements of law, the comprehensive plan, the land development regulations. Okay, so I guess-
Vice Mayor, not to interrupt, 7A and 9D?
7B, too.
7B, too? 7A, 7B, and 9D are all quasi judicial, so if anybody's going to be speaking on those items, it should be sworn in.
Okay. Can we swear in anyone who wants to speak on 7A, 7B, or what was the other one?
Uh, 9D.
9D? Does anyone want to speak on them? Mr. Long?
But the authority vested in me has a notary of the state of Florida. Do you swear or not that the testimony you're about to share is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Resolution 65-25, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, approving a major subdivision application for a final plat for a subdivision known as STOM 1201 George Bush Boulevard for the property located at 1201 George Bush Boulevard, as more particularly described herein, providing an effective, effective date and further purposes.
All right. Did anyone have ex parte communication with the applicant or representative of the applicant?
Only if it's on the server.
The server, I haven't talked to anyone about this.
Are we doing our new rules now?
May 1st.
Oh, okay. I briefly spoke with Mr. Schiller just during another meeting and anything that might be on the server.
Mr. Mark?
I spoke briefly with Mr. Schiller.
I spoke with Mr. Schiller as well.
Did I talk to you about this?
I did.
I just told you it was on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
That counts.
It doesn't count.
Because I talked to you about something else, but I didn't, nothing on George Bush Boulevard. Okay.
All right, I think we can move on. It's all, it's all you, Neil.
I, Anthea Giudice for Development Services, and I'd like to enter File 2023-059 for the Class 5 and the 2023-189, which is the plat that implements that Class 5.
Now, Neil, sorry.
It's all right. No, thank you so much. Good evening, Neil Schiller, representing the applicant, STOM Development Group for 1201 George Bush Boulevard for a final plat. This is just literally the end of the approval process. We are so excited to be here tonight. We remind you that this is three townhomes with frontage on Andrews Avenue, right on George Bush Boulevard. Planning and zoning recommended approval unanimously. The use you'll see is consistent with the existing development pattern. So briefly, the site was previously a professional office building. I think a law firm previously was the tenant there. On November 7, 2023, the City Commission approved a rezoning from residential office to medium-density residential. Then, a year later, in 2024, the commission affirmed the administratively approved site plan for those three townhomes. The land use is transitional, the zoning is medium-density residential. You can see the, the property highlighted in that blue on both of those maps, the land use and the zoning, to see exactly where it is. It's right smack next to medium-density residential MD. And then RM zoning allows for three townhomes. The residential office zoning did not. And then on the lower right-hand side, Table NDC, you see how the transitional zoning is implemented, or transitional land use, excuse me, is implemented by the RM or medium-density residential zoning district. I just wanted to show you the approved site plan of the three townhomes. This is the proposed plat. George, I'm sorry, George Bush is to the south on the bottom. On the left-hand side is Andrews Avenue. All of the, the three units will enter and exit from, from George, from, excuse me, Andrews Avenue. As you know, there are required findings, so you have to be consistent with the land use map, and the three townhomes are consistent with the RM zoning and the TRN future land use. Concurrent, so the good news is, there's a net decrease of 36 trips with this proposed project based on the rezoning, going from professional office to three townhomes. There are sufficient capacity in your schools, in your water sewer, solid waste and drainage. Consistency with the always Delray comprehensive plan, there are a multitude of policies that we're consistent with. We just highlighted two of them for brevity. And then compliance with your LDRs. The site plan has been approved administratively. That demonstrates compliance with our LDRs. Again, so this is unique to have sort of site plan final actions relate to a final plat, but we're going to do that anyway because your code requires it. So A, building, design, landscaping, and glare shall not be such. They don't create unwarranted distractions, and these concerns were addressed in administrative approval by your staff to ensure that we met all of the codes required. All developments shall provide pedestrian and bicycle and vehicular interconnections to adjacent properties where possible and include accessible routes. Each unit has direct access to Andrews Avenue and their sidewalk improvements made along George Bush and Andrews. Open space enhancements, enhancements or recreational amenities shall be provided to meet objective OPR 1.4 and other requirements of the goals, objectives, and policies. And again, the site plan, which was approved administratively by your staff, meets all of that open space requirement, and that was confirmed in the administrative approval. Any proposed street widening or modifications to the traffic circulation shall be evaluated by the city, and if found to have a detrimental impact upon the result of the degradation of an existing neighborhood, the request shall be modified or denied. The city engineer has approved the site plan and the plat, signifying that that is not happening, that there is no detrimental impact. In fact, there's a positive impact, was reducing the number of trips by 36. Development of residentially zoned vacant land shall be planned in a manner consistent with adjacent development, regardless of zoning designations. And again, the project is consistent with the existing development pattern. As I'll show you on the slides, there are a ton of townhomes all up and down this block and in this area. The property shall be developed or redeveloped in a manner so that the use intensity and density are appropriate in terms of soil, topographic, and other applicable physical considerations. And again, the project is consistent with the existing development pattern. The townhomes are pervasive use in the area, and the impact in the intensity of the use is decreasing what is currently there today. G, the development shall provide a variety of housing types to accommodate the city's growing socioeconomically diverse population. And again, there are three townhomes that weren't currently there. That provides three other opportunities for residents of Palm, of, of Delray Beach. Consideration shall be given to the effect the development will have on the safety, livability, and stability of the surrounding neighborhoods. And again, this project is consistent with the existing multifamily and townhome use that is pervasive in the area. I, development shall not be approved if traffic associated with the development would create a new high accident location. That does not exist here. Again, we're reducing traffic by 36 trips. Tot lots and recreational areas serving children, teens, and adults shall be a feature of all new housing development for, but projects with less than 25 units are excluded. So this is three units, so we're not providing those areas for the public. We're providing them internally for each of the units. K, development shall not exceed maximum limits. And again, these are, again, was addressed with the administrative approval by staff to ensure that we are not exceeding any maximum limits. I will tell you, we went back and forth with your staff a number of different months to ensure that the project met all, fit within the box that we were given. And then D, the development shall meet the intent of energy efficiently C and diverse energy mix where applicable. And again, we have incorporated as many green standards as we can in our, in our project. This is just a rendering of the front of the project. We think it's gorgeous and beautiful. And this is the rear, even prettier. And I think the rest, future residents will be very happy there. We ask for your approval tonight. Again, your planning and zoning board recommended unanimously to approve this final plat. Once this final plat is approved, we'll be able to submit for building permit, and away we go. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Schiller.
So, just a couple quick points, just to make a couple clarifications. I don't know that you need a full presentation from staff at this point because Mr. Schiller's covered the plat pretty well. This is really an implementation of a project that's already been approved. And while it was eligible for staff approval, every approval, including the administrative ones, appears on the appealable report, so there's an opportunity for the City Commission to review it and, you know, appeal it. So I just want to say that on December 17, 2024, the City Commission voted to uphold the administrative approval through the appealable process of the Level 2 site plan application. And the other thing is that plats don't usually come to you in the form of a resolution. The reason that this one is in the form of a resolution is the building that you see on Mr. Schiller's screen is still on the property. Therefore, the plat is not in the back room to be signed for execution today. The resolution before you stipulates that the approval of the plat will become effective once we have a certificate of completion of the demolition of the existing building, because we can't plat new lot lines over an existing building. And so those are the only real points that I wanted to add to the presentation. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you, Anthea. I think it's time for anyone who would like to speak on this item to come up to the podium. No? All right. Then I guess it goes to us to discuss this. Everybody okay with this? Everybody on board?
Yeah, totally.
Vice Mayor, I know there wasn't really anything, but they have an opportunity for rebuttal or cross-examination.
Any rebuttal, cross-examination?
Just, just one minute. I really do want to thank your staff. They have been really excellent to work with on this project, and I know my client is looking to start doing more. So thank you.
Excellent. I'll take a motion if someone's ready.
Motion to approve Resolution Number 6525.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Neil. Can we let the mayor out of the?
No, not yet. 7B, there's a conflict in 7B, too.
Oh, really? Oh, man.
Yeah.
So 7B is, is now 7B, 7B1 and 7B2. Ms. Giudice has indicated that the certification of the final plat is a quasi judicial.
Hi. You know what? We go back and forth on this because as you saw Mr. Schiller presented, there's a lot of findings. We don't usually do it through a resolution. So, okay. She says no. I defer to Ms. Jalen. Okay. So, okay, so then we can go to the certification. And I'm sorry, you're not Mr. Elk, so I don't know your name, so if you can-
I'm Mark Petrowski.
Petrowski, okay.
Yes. I'm construction manager for the Fifth Avenue Townhome Project at 142 and 152 Southeast Fifth Avenue. As you can see on the rendering, that's a rendering of the front elevation. Just an aerial shot of proposed location. There's two lots that we're going to be combining into five townhomes. Just another aerial shot. And that's our approved site plan. And the second story and our plat for final signature. We're requesting that from you all tonight. Short and sweet.
I like it. Thank you.
Can I just ask you a question? So when I was reading this 7B, there's a line in here that says Town of Linton. What does that mean?
Okay, so I, I can show you, I think, if my presentation comes up. We'll see if Kam has it. So when the city of Delray was first laid out, it was technically the Town of Linton in some parts. And so the plat that is being changed, I don't know if, is there a presentation up there? There should be. Okay, so then you'll see. So this is a Level 2 site plan that was approved in October 2024. It's five three-story townhomes. They need to take the existing property and subdivide it into these simple parcels so that they can sell their project when they're finished building it. There's a couple of drainage easements and other things that, you know, have to be moved around, access easements and things for the project to function legally over time. And I didn't have it. I don't think I left it as a, as a non-hidden slide. But what you'll see is that they're basically taking, like, two lots and turning them. It's two lots that are existing in the Town of Linton plat, and they're turning them into five face simple. I think it's in here, and I just hit it. So there it is. Okay, so this is the original Town of Linton, the way that the city was laid out, and apparently this was Lawrence Street at one point. So they are basically taking lots 15 and 16 and turning them into the five to implement the project that was approved in October of 2024. So it's fairly straightforward.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, can I just add one thing?
Please.
So there's two other items for your consideration that are typically on the consent agenda. One is an easement agreement for the pedestrian clear zone, and the other is a landscape maintenance agreement. These are typical agreements that we issue as part of development. But again, they were pulled because the mayor can't vote on them. So when you vote on this item, if you can just do a motion to approve 7B, 7B1, and 7B2, we can just address everything at one time.
Would anyone like to make that motion? Do you guys want to discuss it? Would anyone like to make that motion? Do you guys want to discuss it?
Excuse me, motion to approve items seven B, seven B one and seven B two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Mayor can come out of his dungeon.
Want me to go get him?
I'm sure he knows.
See, where are we?
Seven C.
Seven C, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll take it.
You said, you said you had comments?
I do. And I offer comments in response to some of the dialogue that was initiated at the beginning of the meeting because the purpose of this is truly nothing more than to give the commission an opportunity to evaluate its special events policy. That is so because, of course, I've had an opportunity to speak to several of you all individually about the city's role and function with respect to special events policy, primarily in the context of budget allocation, financial resources, et cetera. Not to mention some of the other thoughts that had been shared earlier this evening that was brought up with me individually as well. And interestingly enough, one question I did experience is the question relative to the city manager's ability to make adjustments to special events administration, allocation of resources, et cetera. I think it's very important to clarify and underscore that that is a role and function of the city commission, number one. Number two, special event policy is an opportunity to be evaluated during proposed budget processes. We had an opportunity to discuss this during the current fiscal year proposed budget process, July-August timeframe of twenty twenty-four, of which we generally offered guidance and direction to consider sponsorship opportunities and other austerity measures to help us address this particular point of consideration. So I think it's appropriate that we do what we can to provide a brief summary as to the extent of our involvement with different special event activities so that we can move forward in the future. Likewise, what's being presented in the agenda transmittal as it was updated last week summarizes what the city is currently, pardon me, what the city is currently involved in with respect to special event policy administration, as well as some other thoughts and considerations being made available. In light of some of the comments having been made earlier, I actually support the idea of working closely with state lobbyist representative Matt Forrest to get some clarification that I could share with all of you all with regards to any issues or concerns that may exist at the state of Florida level. Whereas I appreciate individual elected officials taking an initiative to engage in that regard, the office of the city manager would welcome the opportunity to officially engage so as to provide an update to that effect. With that, I plan to reach out to Matt Forrest tomorrow and to ask him to provide a summary that I could share with the city commission as well as to be able to talk a little bit about it publicly during the April twenty-second meeting. However, I think it's important to understand for the record, once again, special event policy, including the noted events and activities, are a function of city commission policy and not that of the office of the city manager, Department of Parks and Recreation, et cetera. So for that reason, we have prepared ourselves accordingly to proceed. However, I do support and will likewise execute the expectation for future private sponsorships and other arrangements to connect the dots in that regard. So those are my opening comments. I've actually worked closely with Director of Parks and Recreation Sam Mietat to prepare for any specific questions or concerns that might exist regarding any special event and what our level of involvement is, as well as working with Assistant City Manager Jeff Oris to provide an overall summary in terms of what our level of activity is, in that regard is as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I yield at this time, available for any specific questions. But quite frankly, this is an opportunity for the city commission to offer its expectations above and beyond what I've just shared.
Okay, Commissioner Cassell?
No, I would, I think you should reach out, find out how much we're asking for. I would, I, look, everybody wants to go ahead with this event. We just don't want there to be repercussions, financial repercussions on our residents. So the question is how best to do it? Mr. Mietat had a great idea, have the concert and, and consider it a separate item. There is options, you know, my personal views and support of this event have to be subordinated by what's in the best interest of the residents as a whole. And if there is a possibility that the residents are going to lose funding from our government, that's something that we need to say, are we willing to do that or risk it or not? And that's all I'm asking for is a discussion and I, I don't think that's unreasonable to discuss it. I'd like to know how much money we're asking for. And, you know, I spoke to our lobbyists and how I came to speak to them is last year when we lost all our funding, reporters reached out to me and they, one asked, well, do you think it's the Form Six litigation? Or do you think it's some of the events?
What do you mean by lost our funding?
We didn't get funding for some of the.
You mean when the governor vetoed what the legislative appropriations?
The infrastructure funding on Swinton that we expected to get because we had already gotten some different funding that we had anticipated we get.
You know, the entire county was vetoed, but it wasn't just.
I spoke to Mr. Forrest because I got a call from a reporter. I'm articulating what transpired.
I'm just making sure I understand what you're saying.
And I'm just telling you what the conversation was between me and him one year ago. I said, do you believe we lost that money from the Form Six litigation? He said, I don't think so. I said, do you believe we lost it because of some of these events that we're having, namely the Pride Festival? He said, listen, you can't say that you lost it for that reason, but people are watching and I would be mindful of what's going on when you're, you know, asking for money. Fast forward to this year, I reached out to him and I said, what do you think? And he said, bad idea. So I want to, I'm bringing that conversation here. I want to have the event, we've had the event, we're an inclusive city, we always have been. But be mindful of the fact that there could be repercussions to that determination. It's the same reason why we spent, how much money, seventy thousand dollars to do a diversity study? And yet sat here and didn't speak about it because we know.
We decided to punt it, not, not do it. We decided to wait till after sessions.
All I'm asking is for a conversation so we have a full understanding and maybe we work something out, however we get it done, we might have to do it slightly differently. I just want to have the conversation. I don't think that's unreasonable when a substantial amount of taxpayer money could be at stake.
Commissioner?
Thank you. First of all, this event would take place in June, after session's over. So it's not the same as a disparity study, which we are going to talk about after session's over. It's different. So also there is zero evidence that anything is, in terms of us having our appropriations vetoed, which has happened for several years in a row countywide, has anything to do with our Pride Festival, Lake Worth's Pride Festival or any other events such as that. There's zero evidence connecting the dots there. So I'd love to hear from Matt Forrest because we should speak to Matt Forrest about anything that has to do with the legislature, frankly.
Right.
But if anything he's going to tell us is going to be conjecture at this point, it's just going to be an estimation.
But I'd like him to make that conjecture, not me, because I'm not in a position to say that.
You could say that about many things. You could say that about many different things in our community.
Rob, there's nothing wrong with asking the question. I'm trying to find a reasonable solution.
There is something wrong with it, though. I disagree.
Sorry.
I have a lot to say about this. I'm just going to read a statement that I, that I already wrote. I'll keep it quick. I have to start by saying how deeply disappointed I am that we're even having this discussion. We shouldn't be. I would, I heard a rumor that there was an attempt to lobby staff to, to cancel this event without due process. And that's why Terrence, because he has integrity, put it on the agenda. We should, this, this, the way things are happening right now is a major issue. It's hard not to see this proposal, to single out this event as anything but suspicious, given the broader national and statewide political climate right now. At a time when LGBTQ plus communities are under increasing attack, it sends the wrong message for Delray Beach to even consider or even talk about pulling our modest support for an event that celebrates inclusion, pride and community spirit. Delray has a long tradition of city-supported and city-funded events that celebrate different facets of our community. Importantly, the city invests significantly more money into other events without question, like the St. Patrick's Day Festival, holiday parade and Christmas tree lighting, supporting the DDA in the Chamber of Commerce with events like Savor the Avenue and the Delray Affair. These investments are made because we recognize the value that special events bring to our community, economic vitality, cultural celebration and a sense of belonging. To single out the Pride Festival, an event that only receives fifteen thousand dollars for defunding after it's been part of our community fabric for years, raises legitimate concerns about fairness and equitable treatment. Our own special events policy states, quote, "We support special events that have a positive impact, celebrate diversity in community and host our neighbors, families and visitors," end quote. The Pride Festival fulfills this mission exactly. It celebrates LGBTQ plus residents, visitors, sends a clear message of acceptance and inclusion and fosters a city culture where everyone feels they belong. It is important to remember that visibility and civic support are crucial, especially for communities who have historically faced exclusion. Events like the Pride Festival contribute to our local economy. They fill our restaurants and shops, just like other events I mentioned. Pride also positions Delray Beach as a destination that embraces diversity, something increasingly important in tourism and business environment here in Delray. Timing and perception, the Delray Festival has already been budgeted, advertised and planned. I know we're not talking about canceling it this year, but why bring it up at all right before the event? At a time when the state and national headlines are full of efforts to marginalize LGBTQ plus communities, Delray Beach must not send a signal that we are retreating from the values we have spent years cultivating. Moreover, it sets a troubling precedent. If every year we revisit whether an event is politically palatable enough to receive funding, all of our longstanding community traditions, including parades and celebrations that have been pillars of civic life, could become vulnerable. Maintaining our modest financial support of the Pride Festival is consistent with how we fund and celebrate many other events that bring joy, pride and economic vibrancy to our city. It reflects who we are, a diverse, welcoming and forward-thinking community. I urge us to stand behind the Pride Festival as we stand behind the St. Patrick's Day Parade, the Holiday Parade, the Christmas Tree Lighting, Savor the Avenue, the Delray Affair and all the other events that make Delray Beach a place we are proud to call home. Let's continue to build a Delray Beach that celebrates everyone. I understand this is just a discussion, but just having this discussion and putting this on our agenda sends a very, very negative message to our community.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mark? Did you want to go next?
I, I would.
Go ahead, Anthea.
If, if he doesn't have almost everything I have on my paper, I couldn't say it any better. I am total in support of what our vice mayor said. We have created a tradition here in Delray Beach and I don't think that we should be retreating from those principles right now. It reinforces a message of belonging and safety for all of our community. So I am totally for remaining and I'm also disappointed that it's even on our agenda. So I support.
Please. Are you finished now?
Yeah, I'll save my letter.
I, I don't disagree, but, but I have a differing point of view. We have an obligation sitting up here as elected officials to investigate data and we had some data brought to us by a lobbyist. I haven't heard it yet. And if, we just need to know how the, the deck is stacked. And right now, I don't know that. If this lobbyist is saying we're losing funding because of this, it doesn't mean we wouldn't do it, but we sure as hell owe it to the voters to, to investigate it. I mean, it, it's just common sense. So I, I don't see us delaying anything, but I think a meeting with, with the lobbyists, and I don't know whether you do it yourself or we do it as a group, I think we just need the intel so that we can make the right decision, period. Are you finished? Yes. I just put stuff on anyone's toes. No, you're good. I'm sorry, did you want to?
No, I was simply reiterating my suggestion to follow up with Matt Forrest. So my thinking or my vision in that regard is my office engages with him beginning tomorrow so that I can assemble written material that I can immediately share with the city commission. And that information can likewise be shared for the record during the April twenty-second commission meeting as well so that clarity can be achieved. And again, I think the city commission, we do as best as we possibly can to provide as much information, background data to clarify the facts as much as we can. I need Matt Forrest's help in order to accomplish that, notwithstanding the scope of the special events policy as it pertains to the current program year.
My, my comment, my comment has to do with the scope of the special events policy.
If I may, ladies and gentlemen, before you continue, Mr. Mayor, please forgive me. I was planning to wait to the end of the meeting. However, that alarm that's being experienced, it is actually the lightning detection system over at the Delray Beach Tennis Center, a facility owned and operated by the city of Delray Beach. So nothing to fret, but the weather conditions are prompting the alarm as a result because lightning has been identified in the area.
I thought it was Monterey trying to get people to vote for it.
No, nothing like that. No police, no.
I'm going to vote for it.
Public safety, simply the lightning detection system, so please bear pass.
But, but I, because, because we are entering, I, I'm very concerned our budget, generally speaking.
Of course.
And I do think, and I've gone through this list and, you know, I, I think we need to see which events should be city-funded and which shouldn't be. I mean, they're all, you know, I don't know whether the Surf Festival should be city-funded or not. I don't know whether, you know, kids, I mean, I don't know whether these things, maybe at one time when we were flush, it was good to fund everything. But I, I, I think we need to look at our, our events policy, generally speaking, not just one event. I mean, I think everyone should be, we should determine whether or not this event should be a city-sponsored event. And if it is, it makes the list. If we decide it shouldn't be and there's ways to privately fund it, then we can encourage that as we do with a bunch of our nonprofits. We've had to tell a bunch of our nonprofits, you got to come up with money to do it. So, I mean, I, I don't, I, I'm acknowledging what everybody says here, but my, my issue isn't with a particular line item. My particular is, shouldn't we be looking at the special events policy, generally speaking, to see on a budgetary basis which should or should not be paid for by the city? So, I mean, and there's a long list, there's, there's a long list here. I've gone to all these events. So, but whether or not they should be a city event or whether they should be privately, privately sponsored, that's where I am in this issue.
And, Mr. Mayor and ladies and gentlemen, the opportunity to achieve or offer contributions in that regard is the upcoming proposed budget process so that we can evaluate what opportunities are plausible in that regard. Because like you, I'm conscious about any opportunities for efficiencies in operations and to achieve a, a level of dependency on private sponsorships to help maintain quality of life events in our community, whatever they may be. So as we engage the proposed budget process for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, a hallmark feature working with the Department of Parks and Recreation and other pertinent operations of the city of Delray Beach will be to evaluate what opportunities make sense and do not. It's also an opportunity to potentially shift resources because myself and other leaders of the city administratively have discussed where other opportunities might make sense in that regard as well. So I would like to work with all of you, ladies and gentlemen, and the public at large, potential partners in the community and outside the community to connect the dots in terms of sponsorship so that we can outline some considerations as a function of the upcoming proposed budget process.
Yeah, I mean, as I said, these all, we may say all of these are great. I don't know.
They are.
I don't know what each one costs.
Let us go about the budget process.
You know, I mean, there, there's stuff on here that I would say that, you know, we, we've spent a lot of money on that, we, you know, that we probably shouldn't.
So.
The tennis tournament being one.
So if I may, Parks and Recreation, the Department of Parks and Recreation, above and beyond the preliminary workshop they'll have in the next couple of weeks, there'll be an opportunity via the June workshop, I believe, June, ten, twenty twenty-five. So Mr. Mietat will work together to feature the special events policy evaluation as we prepare for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, what balances can be considered to, to alleviate funding concerns to the extent possible and to be across the board in that regard.
I mean, all of these are valuable. Delray Beach Open, St. Patrick's Day, Springfield, they're all, all, all of these are valuable. I'm just, at what point, I just want to address how much these things are costing.
Budget process.
Quick question about that, in terms of that analysis, can we incorporate some sort of analysis? Maybe we could work with the DDA to see what the economic benefit to the city is.
I think that's included.
Based on these events as well.
That would be part of the mix.
Value added, absolutely.
And if I may, Vice Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, what we're subjecting about is a potential economic impact analysis to support whatever outcomes there might be. Because quite frankly, some special events garner a great deal more of economic impact than others. And that's a compelling factor as well. So if there's residual or, or positive revenue outcomes to the city of Delray Beach, that's something to consider as part of that evaluation and analysis. And working with the aforementioned staff people, that will be part of the communication as we consider the proposed budget process in that regard. So I'm very. So, I'm very conscious, I'm very clear in that regard, ladies and gentlemen, it does take under consideration all points raised by five of you, and understand what's in store for the current program year. We'll do what we possibly can to strike a balance and identify whatever resource is plausible to help make it happen, per some of the recommendations or suggestions that have been offered here today. So, first and foremost, or to further conclude, what's outlined in the special events policy, or the events outlined in the current special events policy, we are prepared, we are structured in that regard. Moving forward, we'll strike that balance to make it financially prudent, or more financially prudent to the extent we can, via the economic impact analysis, as well as potential private sponsorship considerations that may become available.
Great. So, are we finished with the seventh seat?
Yeah, but just to add to that in the beginning, you'll look at the other cities and see, are they privately funding or is the city funding? I tried to find out about Fort Lauderdale, it's a very large city. I think that could be a city-initiated event, but I would just like to know what everybody else is doing, and I'd like to know what the potential consequences are.
Yes, ma'am. That would be part of that budget analysis or that budget discussion I just talked about, that will be a hallmark feature, benchmarking other communities, who does what, what level of sponsorship exists, et cetera.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, Mr. Metot and Mr. Oris, working closely with everyone else involved, will engage with one another and facilitate that. Otherwise, we will continue our plans for the present fiscal year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on, there are no public hearings or second readings. We have some first readings.
Mayor, nine A, B, C, and D are all related, so can I read those all together? Because nine D requires...
Please do.
Nine D requires public comment. All right, here we go. An ordinance, ordinance number 0525, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, adopting a comprehensive plan amendment by amending policy NDC 1.4.7 of the Neighborhood District and Quarter's Element of the Always Delray Comprehensive Plan to allow for the commerce land use designation along Congress Avenue, south of West Atlantic Avenue, providing a conflicts clause, a separability clause, providing an effective date, and for other purposes. Nine B, ordinance number 06-25, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations of the City of Delray Beach Code of Ordinances, Chapter 4 zoning regulations, Article 4.3, District Regulations, General Provisions, Section 4.3.3, Special Requirements for Specific Uses, Subsection AA, Adult Entertainment Establishments, to prohibit adult entertainment establishments, south of Atlantic Avenue, providing a conflicts clause, a separability clause, authority to codify, and providing an effective date. Nine C, ordinance number 02-25, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, adopting a small-scale land use map amendment, redesignating a parcel of land measuring approximately 4.27 acres, located at 975 South Congress Avenue, as more particularly described herein, from Congress Avenue mixed-use to commerce pursuant to the provisions of the Community Planning Act, Florida Statute, Section 163.3187, providing a conflicts clause and a separability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes. And nine D, ordinance number 01-25, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, rezoning land measuring approximately 4.27 acres, located at 975 South Congress Avenue, as more particularly described herein, from mixed residential, office, and commercial to mixed industrial and commercial, amending the City of Delray Beach zoning map, July 6, 2021, providing a conflicts clause and a separability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Is the applicant here for this? Can you just come up to the podium? Mayor, because this is a privately initiated rezoning, it is a quasi-judicial matter. The applicant would actually have the opportunity to make a presentation today. It's my understanding that they are waiving that?
That's correct. We are gonna waive that tonight.
And what's your name for the record?
McKenna West.
Thank you. So, Mayor, we just need to open up 01-25 for public comment.
Okay, well, we're opening it up for public comment. Have you already read the quasi-judicial rules?
Yes, sir.
Okay, did you include this in the instructions?
We did.
Well, then, fine. Does anybody wishing to speak on this item, please come to the lectern, give your name and address, make sure you've been sworn by our clerk, and you will have three minutes. Don't all rush up at once. Seeing none, the public comment on this item is closed.
I don't think there's any rebuttal or cross-examination, so we can move to commission discussion.
Okay, commission to the commission to discuss.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
This says city-initiated, and this, is it private or is it city?
That is an Anthea question.
Good evening. So, the land use map and zoning map amendments are privately initiated. The city has brought two ordinances in companionship with this. By rezoning the property back to MIC from MRoc, MIC does contain uses like adult entertainment that currently are limited to north of Atlantic Avenue, so city staff brought forward a comprehensive plan text amendment saying that commerce is appropriate, that land use is appropriate to the south. However, we would be limiting in the LDRs the expansion of the area that is currently allowed to have that particular use, that gets opened up with that industrial use, so that we did that as city-initiated, both the comprehensive plan amendment allowing for commerce to expand south of Atlantic Avenue, which is consistent with the analysis we had done for the types of uses that are appropriate along Congress Avenue, so we didn't think that that was really the burden of the applicant. And also, we just wanted to sort of contain the use that their zoning request could inadvertently have a side effect. It's not the use that they're trying to use, so they... There's no objection from them for us doing that.
Okay, thank you for that answer.
Hope that made sense.
So, do we... Motion to approve these? These four then go onto nine E?
Yes, please.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the nine A, B, C, and D.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Nine E.
Ordinance number 09-25, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations of the City of Delray Beach Code of Ordinances, Chapter 4 zoning regulations, Article 4.4, based zoning district, Section 4.4.19, mixed industrial and commercial, MIC districts, Subsection H, special regulations modifying the prohibition of overhead doors from facing a public right-of-way, to prohibit overhead... It's a double. Overhead doors from facing a minor arterial right-of-way residential zoning district or residential use, amending Section 4.4.20, industrial I district, Subsection H, special regulations modifying the prohibition of overhead doors from facing the public right-of-way of an arterial or collector street, to prohibit overhead doors from facing a minor arterial right-of-way residential zoning district or residential use, in Section 4.4.26, light industrial LI district, Subsection H, special regulations modifying the prohibition of overhead doors from facing a public right-of-way, to prohibit overhead doors from facing a minor arterial right-of-way residential zoning district or residential use, providing a conflicts clause, a separability clause, authority to codify, and providing an effective date. This is first reading.
Great.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Comments inquiry inquiries on non-agenda items?
Oh, no, Mayor, we have nine now.
We have what?
We have two more.
Oh, God.
Ordinance number 15-25, an ordinance of the...
I don't mean that. If they're your projects, I don't mean that. I love them all. Really, I love them.
These are city-initiated. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Title V Public Works, Chapter 52 Water, Section 52.34 Water Rates to increase the rates for water furnished by the city, and amending Chapter 53 Sanitary Sewers, Section 53.130 User Charges, Wholesale Sewer Rates, calculation of sewer surcharge, to increase the sanitary sewer rates for services provided by the city, providing a conflicts clause, providing a separability clause, authority to codify, and providing an effective date. This is first reading.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Adopted.
Last one. Ordinance, well, first reading. Ordinance number 14-25, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances Title V Public Works, Chapter 56, Stormwater, Section 56.02, scope and purpose to clarify the reference to the system, amending Section 56.04 definitions, amending the definitions for common element, non-assessed property, stormwater management assessment, and unimproved land, and adopting definitions for condominium property, condominium unit, and cooperative, to expand definitions and clarify assessment method, to establish a standardized rate for unimproved land to align with the Florida Statues for non-advalorm assessments for common elements, amending Section 56.15 imposition of stormwater management assessment, classification, and criteria, to add condominium property as an additional classification, and amending Section 56.16 establishment of rate for stormwater management assessments, to clarify how common elements are assessed, providing a conflicts clause, providing a separability clause, authority to codify, and providing an effective date. First reading.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's adopted. Comments inquiries on non-agenda items, Mr. City Manager?
I yield at this time, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
That's good news. Anyway, moving right along. City Attorney?
Unfortunately, I don't yield. So, very quickly, and Mayor, I am gonna secure an opinion on this issue, but I just want to be very clear. You know, a conflict of interest is something that's inherent to the individual. So, you as commissioners, you decide if you believe you have a conflict of interest. Nobody else can decide that for you. I can advise you, I can provide you opinions, but at the end of the day, you know your situation best to determine if there's a conflict of interest, and we have to be very judicious about it, because we know that if you have an illegal obligation to vote on something, and you could actually get in trouble by not voting on something.
I know.
So, we need to be very careful about this. So, I am gonna secure an opinion for the Mayor. If it's a ministerial issue, that the paperwork wasn't updated and sun-buzzed, I don't know if that rises to the level of a conflict of interest.
Case law.
So, I understand. So, but, you know, I think having these conversations like this are, for lack of a better word, awkward, and at the end of the day, each person individually is gonna make that determination. Obviously, we are here to guide all of you, the attorneys and staff and I, but we should not challenge another commissioner.
I, and I apologize. I just, you had told me that, and there were times where you had forgotten, and I thought that was the case, and I'm sorry.
I don't forget.
Well, actually...
So, that's my...
I remember when they pay me checks, then I remember.
No, 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 not that you had a client, meaning that you needed to, like, that the case was actually yours. That happened twice when I was, and I had to take the gavel fast.
So, that's my two cents on that.
Thank you.
I am requesting a shade meeting, and I know it's a little bit of short notice, but the case is actually on the trial docket. There's a calendar call on Friday, so I do need to address this with the commission. This is the Genko case, which is the young lady that was on the bicycle that was, you know, injured. I would like to do it this Thursday at noon, no?
Oh, noon is okay.
At noon. I know, it's a lunch.
Wait, this Thursday?
Yes. It should be very quick. I just need 30 minutes of your time to do this. Mr. Moore is unavailable on Friday, I'm unavailable next week. If you want it next week, I can have one of the assistants available, I can try to zoom in.
Could I ask you, could we do it at 10 of noon? I have a 12:30 right down the street. Or 5 of noon, if you think it's 30?
We can do 11:30 if you want.
Okay.
Or I can, yeah. Let me check, because I have my morning with...
This Thursday?
Yes, this Thursday.
I can do it when?
You can, thank you.
I can't do it Thursday.
When can you? Can you appear by phone? Potentially?
I'll be in the car. I have a meeting, I don't want my way to a 12 o'clock meeting in Broward, so, I mean, I don't need to be at it, I'm sure my colleagues can handle it. I could do it Friday, it was a better day for me, and then I'm gonna be out of town the whole next week.
Right.
So, don't wait on me, though, it's fine.
I could do it Friday between 12 and 2.
How does Friday work for everyone else?
I can do Friday, pretty much whenever.
If you can call in, I can do any day.
Okay.
Friday's...
You can call in.
So...
I just, I need a quorum physically, but you can definitely call.
Yeah, like I said, we could, you know, if we could do a Thursday, I mean, I don't, you know, whatever.
Do you want to do Friday? What about Friday at noon?
No, we can do it Friday, we can be back in two days.
That works for me.
Friday at noon?
It's fine.
Okay, so pursuant to Florida Statute 286.011, case number 50-2023, CA 7528, Allison Genko versus City of Delray Beach, I'm requesting a shade session to discuss settlement negotiations. The shade session would take place Friday, April 11, 2025, at noon. It'll last approximately 60 minutes, most likely less. In attendance would be outside counsel John Midwall, Olga Butkovich, Assistant City Manager Jeff Oris, myself, Lynn Jell, and City Attorney, Mayor Tom Carney, Vice Mayor Rob Long, Deputy Vice Mayor Angela Burns, Commissioner Markert, and Commissioner Casal, and a certified court reporter. If I can just get a motion?
Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Did you say six minutes?
I wish. No more than 60.
Oh, okay.
60 minutes, okay. 12 to 1.
Thank you, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to come back, if I may, please. Please forgive me, and one of the items that was brought up by a member of the public pertained to Libby West Park and the disrepair of the bench, I just wish the report that...
That's one of mine, so...
That's actually on orders, being delivered next week, so we anticipate an installation and repair over the next couple of weeks. So, whenever we have an opportunity to offer that clarity or progress report, after it was raised publicly, I'd like to respond, so I just thought I'd take the opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Markert, who'd like to go first?
You want me to go? Okay.
Commissioner Markert.
I have no further comment.
Commissioner Burns.
Okay, so I have a couple of things. One of them is, I get, there was a misunderstanding about the proclamation. I did get consensus about the let's move proclamation, which the event happens in March, and since it was late, the clerk informed me that they put it on for next year, but we actually wanted it for this year as well. We knew that it was gonna be late, so...
Can you do it retroactively?
We can do a retroactive, pardon me.
How about retroactive and have it on for April 22nd?
Yeah.
Are you gonna be presenting it? I mean, really presenting it?
Sure.
I mean, I want, I want, I want a visual.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for that. And then, I know, this is wild up here. Wow, wow, Wes.
It's after 7:00.
Just wanted to compliment the Delray Affair, it was a great event. I missed my gladiolus, though, at, yeah, I missed the gladiolus.
I did, yeah.
Okay, so, I'm a little confused about our educational goals. I know that Janai did an excellent presentation and provided us lots of information with data. However, I don't know if she's clear, but I know I'm not clear about what our goals are in terms of education. I think it should come from the commission, but like, do we have clear... I would like to be clear about what our educational goals are. I'll just say it that way.
If I may, Deputy Vice Mayor, given the guidance and experience during the March twenty-seventh workshop meeting, the next step will involve another follow-up with the City Commission with respect to the comprehensive plan so that additional clarity can be achieved via that process. So we look forward to initiating that in the coming weeks, actually.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think, okay, that's it. Education goals, Delray Affair. Yep, I'm good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Casal?
Thanks. So in reading your information letter, there was a comment about the cost for the gates, for the railroad gates, and it's over a million dollars, one million fifty dollars. And I just wonder if, I know that there is a comment in the information letter about the CIP budget and considering how to accomplish that payment, but I have to say, in retrospect, we, this incident happened, do we really foresee someone going around the gate on the wrong side of the road? Because these are not the gates on the right side where you'd be driving. They're on the left side where presumably people should not be driving. And at that expense, if it's not a requirement, maybe we need to just think about if we want to do it. I'm not saying now, I'm just throwing it out there to my colleagues because it's a substantial amount of money under the consideration of tonight's budget. We know what we're facing. I just don't know if we need that. I thanked Anthea for the book, The Key to the City. There's a, there was a chapter that was very nice about us. It's a quick read, and there's also a chapter about Hartford, Connecticut, which I enjoyed. And then, super quick, and I don't know if any of you are having these similar discussions. The Chamber reached out, I had a quick conversation about the Old School Square event they're doing at the Chamber. And Stephanie was nice enough to say, hey, we're doing this event, it's the six-inch square, you know, and I said, thanks for letting me know. And I don't have any problem with any of the events, but it is confusing, City Attorney, that logo issue. And do people, are people donating to us? Are they donating to them? I really didn't even realize, I don't even know who's left in that organization. I was talking to Patty Jones lately the other day. I don't even know if she's still in it. I don't know what's going on, but I would be concerned if money that would otherwise should be going to the property is going to an organization for lack of clarity and confusion.
Mayor, can I respond?
Yes, please respond, because I was going to.
So the logo, as part of litigation, the resolution of the litigation, they were entitled to retain that logo. I know Jeff has worked very hard with them to, anytime we get complaints about the website and the concerns that, you know, where the money is going to, I know Jeff has reached out. He can probably speak to that aspect of it. I did get a call from the DDA's attorney expressing some concerns, and we have scheduled a meeting to brainstorm what we can do. They're a nonprofit organization. They're allowed to exist. And, you know, we would hope that if people are intending to donate to the city, they would at least be forewarned or told, but, you know, there's only so much that we can do. I know that Jeff had reached out to them, and I do believe that they changed their website to some extent.
I haven't looked at it.
I looked at it the other day. There are still a significant amount of photos of the property that could be confusing, and so that's why we're having the meeting to...
But they have added a disclaimer.
They did, okay.
They have added a disclaimer, saying this is not associated with, so...
So I really think that's the...
But it's on the bottom, and they're, you know...
Nothing else we can do.
I don't know how much else we can do.
Okay, thank you for the update. That's it.
Who's next, Mr.?
I think I'm the only one left, right?
Huh?
Come on, the last man standing here besides you. So a quick thing, I wanted to start, trigger the process and potentially explore text amendment sponsorship. So I met with a potential future applicant recently who owns a parcel in Delray Zone for Light Industrial. And as we know, this type of property is few and far between in our city at this point. They have an interest in exploring whether we could expand the allowable uses for light industrial, specifically to consider service industry uses, which are defined in the code under LDR section four four two B five, service industry. Service industry uses are those which are primarily engaged in providing off-site services but which remain inventory, storage of materials, or business office at a central location. Repair of equipment and materials associated with the services is also permitted at this central location. So here's the examples. Land development services like surveying, soil testing, mapping, architectural engineering, contractor and trade services, general contractor, electrician, plumbers, heating and air conditioning specialist, swimming pool maintenance, landscaping services, exterminators, equipment and tool rental, repair of equipment, typewriters, computers, data processing equipment, business services, typewriters, computers, data processing, processing equipment, linzine service, indoor gun ranges, food preparation and/or processing, including but not limited to bakeries and catering operations. So this expansion in uses for light industrial, it would take a text amendment to do that. I believe it's worth exploring, especially especially when we consider that our industrial, light industrial property could be lost under the Live Local Act. Offering more flexibility of use on these properties could be a step towards keeping these properties more viable for their intended use or ancillary uses that are closer to their intended use rather than being bought up and transferred to residential properties. So I would just like to get a consensus to schedule a workshop just to discuss this whole issue, to explore it.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, they're, that's, they're folding it in, keeping the industrial use and adding industrial-ish type things there.
Yeah, it would just be a light industrial, which is already kind of a quasi version of a...
I'd be curious, you know, let the staff start, you know, come back to us with what they think we, you know...
Well, it would be scheduled for a workshop, and then the applicant would come in and make a very short presentation to the commission.
That's fine.
If at that point, three commissioners, you know, concur that it shouldn't be forward.
Oh, yes, right, you got that rule now.
You're doing that. Privately initiated amendments two four seven. So today, we're just putting it on a workshop agenda and some future date, and we can reach out to the applicant and schedule that.
That's fine.
Right. So if I may, if there's consensus, which it appears to be, we traditionally have a quarterly experience to that effect, given that policy, so it'd fall along the lines of January, April, July, October timeframe. So we do have a workshop meeting opportunity in July, but the next workshop meeting actually takes place June tenth. And that will pertain to the budgetary process that I committed a little while ago during a workshop meeting. So one of those days, we can potentially make it work.
Sounds good.
That's fine.
Perfect.
So I may, given that this may take not a terrible amount of time, if it's okay, I think I'd like to pursue the June tenth opportunity for something like that.
That's fine.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, everyone. Quick thing I wanted to bring, I wasn't going to bring this up, but it just came up during public comment, like, multiple times. There's a lot of folks very concerned about the attrition to our police department right now, as am I. We just lost, like, three guys, like, this week to another agency. So people are very concerned about what we're doing, and I'm just wondering if there's any sort of, like, update that we could offer publicly in terms of where we are in the negotiation process? If we have any more closed sessions, if we're headed to that special magistrate, just, if you could just give us a quick update, just let people know kind of what's going on. There's a lot of concern out in the community right now.
So we had a bargaining session yesterday. We did present the pay plan to the to the union, and essentially, we reallocated the money based on the commission's direction to put more money at the front end. And interestingly, our starting salary was much higher than what the union's proposal was. So we're in the seventies, which is what the commission directed us to do, mid-seventies if you have a bachelor's degree. So they are considering their offer. They also made a counter pension offer. So before we schedule a meeting with the commission to discuss their counter, we need to have a discussion with the actuary. They provided us with a report. I'm happy to send it to the commission if you want to review it. But we need to have a discussion with the actuary. We need to discuss it with our pension council. So I've reached out to him. I think I've been meeting with him on Friday. And then we are scheduled to go before the special magistrate, May sixteenth. We did propose to the union, if they were open to it, foregoing that process and potentially just coming before the City Commission. They were going to think that over as well. So, you know, we, yesterday was a lot of discussion. The meeting extended well past five, so there was a lot of back and forth, and, you know, nothing was agreed to yesterday, but they are considering the latest pay plan offer from the commission.
Okay, thank you so much.
Could I ask a question on that to the City Attorney? I think you said in our discussion, based on that entry-level pay, a three-year officer would be making approximately eighty thousand. Is that accurate?
Yes. So the starting salary would be seventy-two thousand and change if you have an associate's degree. If you have a bachelor's, it's almost seventy-five thousand. After one year, it would go to seventy-seven and eighty, and the third year, it would go to eighty-two and eighty-six. So it's a significant improvement, and as I indicated, the union's proposal for starting salary was, was not near that.
I'm sorry, the last one, I didn't hear. You said eighty and eighty-two?
Eighty-two and eighty-six.
Okay, thank you so much.
That's all I got?
Great. One thing, and I wanted just to, because there was a comment. What is our policy if there are multiple calls to the same address for the same issue? I mean, one of them said we should start charging the owners because essentially the people probably are not paying for the call, and it's costing our fire department and our first responders, you know, money. So what what can we do about start charging the homeowner that allows activities to go on where this is, where it's a problem? So that the cost of those repeated visits and, you know, are not borne by the taxpayers, but rather are borne by the property?
Something I would be happy to have us to evaluate. And as far as hard and fast policies with regards to a specific number of visits to a home for police, public safety, any involved? No, there does not exist, but Chief Martin, he chimed in non-verbally when you brought up the question, so I'd like to give him a moment.
Good evening once again, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney. So the city does have an ordinance. It typically applies to occupancies over one or two occupancies for nuisance alarms, false alarms. The repetitive calls are typically managed through our EMS and billing. However, with insurance reimbursement rates, Medicare rules, Medicaid rules that essentially give us a one-shot to bill, we kind of lose money. That's why some of our programs through our community risk reduction, like mobile integrated health, do help offset those costs. So we do have, from the fire rescue standpoint, some mechanisms to bill for those repetitive calls. Thank you.
I'm just saying, there is, they make a good point.
What about police? I thought she was referring specifically to police because she was talking about...
Maybe it could be police and fire.
Right.
Right, it would be public safety.
The public safety. I'm not focusing on fire in particular. I'm just talking about if we have repetitive calls for the same thing.
I agree.
You know, at some point, the property owner who's allowing that to go on within their house, and that may be a tenant, but you can control your tenant by evicting them. Anyway, that's my only comment. So anything else from anybody?
No.
We are adjourned.
Good night, ladies and gentlemen.